I like doing this. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today, today I'll be the Chair of Committee of the Whole, Councilor Phil Singh, Jean Picton Ward. I'd like to welcome every, welcome the public, my fellow council members, the media, and anyone who is joining us in person and electronically for this committee, the whole meeting. Today's committee meeting is being conducted at Shire Hall. Today's agenda lists all of the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed and participation in any part, and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right-hand corner of the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item 5, I will be asking for comments from the audience. Today, there are no registered comments from the audience. If anyone present would like to speak at this section of the agenda and are present at this meeting, you are welcome to do so. Members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can do so by contacting clerks@pecounty.on.ca to register. A reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and be posted to the county's website. I want to remind everyone that we may differ in opinions, but it is important to remain respectful of each other. For those in attendance, please refrain from clapping in the council chambers as it does not add to the discussion and is in contravention of our procedural bylaw. Any motions made at this meeting are not final until the council meeting of August 27, 2024, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or wherever you are tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall, please mute and limit the use of your cell phones. Now, can I get a, please get a motion to confirm the agenda? Councilor Harrison, Councilor Pennell.
This is a Harrison Pennell motion that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting of July 25, 2024 be confirmed.
All in favor? That's carried. Gen. Item 3, disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Does anyone have anything they wish to declare? Seeing none, we will move on to Gen. Item 4.1, deputations. We do have two deputations this afternoon. The first one being Mark Kirkpatrick, President and CEO, Loyalist College, to address the committee regarding Loyalist College programs and local workforce skills development. Good morning, Mark. If you just want to check your microphone, make sure it's lined up so everybody can hear you.
Good? Okay.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Thank you very much for coming today, sir, and you have 10 minutes for your deputation. And I'll give you a 30-second warning near the end.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation to address you here today. Loyalist College is a proud community college, supporting Prince Edward County, Hastings, Northumberland Counties, and Lennox and Addington Counties. Our service region, our service region extends about 150 miles east to west and 180 miles north to south. Except for the First Nations Technical Institution in Tainanega, we're the only post-secondary institution working in service of this very large, mostly rural area of the province. We believe that every student in our community has the right to a first-class post-secondary education in a first-class facility taught by first-class faculty with first-class services and without the need for, to move to a major city. Every business deserves access to first-class workforce development and applied research opportunities that expand and advance their operations. This support should come from a post-secondary institution within their community and the one that understands their unique needs, challenges, and opportunities. Just a quick Loyalist by the numbers for some folks. In 2023-24, gross revenue was 172 million. We have over 1,000 employees across all of our employment categories. Our 2023 planned capital investments totaled over $40 million, and according to a recent economic impact study, Loyalist contributed over $433 million in regional economy in 2011, or 2021. We are active in, we are active members of six chambers of commerce, including the one here in Prince Edward County, and we support and engage over 25 mayors, one First Nations leader, three MPs, and three MTPs, two of which are cabinet ministers. And the total enrollment across all of our locations is about 7,000 students. Recent federal and provincial policy announcements have created a very difficult and financial situation for colleges going forward. Brutal changes capping international students have significantly impacted the future enrollment and thereby revenue of colleges. This will impact Loyalist's gross revenue, but is also, just as importantly, it will undermine our efforts to track a diverse student body and support our region's workforce needs. The province has continued to freeze tuition for domestic students. This freeze was implemented in 2019 after a 10% cut in tuition at the time. With these new regulations, international students enrollment is challenging. However, we continue to show impressive growth in our domestic student numbers. This is a great sign for Loyalist and our region as we need more young people to come and study and stay. And for our regions of mature learners to know that we have access to outstanding post-secondary educational institution, whether it's for upskilling or training for a new career. We believe that we have a mandate to support our communities. We are, after all, a community college. We want to do whatever we can to support our communities prosper, however that is defined for them. Loyalist wants and needs partnerships with our region's local businesses, industries, as we believe true strength lies in partnership. To create the workforce of tomorrow, we are transforming the Bellevue campus into a center of excellence for health and wellness programming. This fall, we've launched new programming, including medical radiation technology, 911 public safety communications, and we have further plans to advance, for advanced care paramedic in the very near future. In addition, 13 new programs have already been approved by the board for launch in the coming two years. This is just the start of a new, diverse, and responsive programming plan for this region. It is by listening to our communities and community partners that we are able to determine what programs are most needed by our region and ultimately the province. What does this mean for Prince Edward County? Many of our new and existing programs require work-integrated learning opportunities and placements that allow our students to experience applied, real-world work experience that links directly to their academic studies. This is a critical part of their learning journey and ultimately their success in the workforce upon graduation. Within, working within Health Pulse and specifically with the Prince Edward County, an innovative program to get students placement opportunities with the county has been established. This summer, Prince Edward County, Queenie Transit, and Loyalist College have launched Shuttle's bus service that will take students from Bellevue campus to H.G. McFarlane Memorial Home for student placement opportunities. There are no, there are plans to expand this initiative this fall to include more health and wellness providers and locations with more placements and locations in the county, opening up more opportunity for students across many programs and for local industry. These programs continue, contribute positively to the employee base of the future for these facilities and through the transit solution indirectly address the need for housing, which can be a challenge in the county. We know that where students study and live is where they want to stay and work. In addition, we understand the need for part-time seasonal labor in the region. Loyalist has established an agreement with the local Chamber of Commerce to support student jobs that will ultimately provide that much-needed labor force. We know that our students are keen to work in the county, but we also understand that commuting from Bellevue can be difficult for many of them. So we're actively looking for a small residence in the Picton area that would enable students to live and work here while still attending class in Bellevue. We've already seen success in this model in our Port Hope campus after establishing both transit and housing opportunities in Coburg. Regional transit is a key to increasing overall integration and mobility. Days of students in cars have passed, and the need for provincial and federal governments to support regional transit is critical. Students and employees in large regions can move within and across cities with ease, but rural communities do not get that benefit. This is a major barrier to economic growth, and we can create the workforce of tomorrow. But if workers cannot get to their employer with these incredibly, these incredibly skilled young people, just simply leave our region. So we continue to look for more opportunities to integrate with the county and all that the college does. At Loyalist, we understand the need for skilled trades. The region has been in pushing, has been, and we have been pushing hard to get approval for three new apprenticeship training programs: electrician construction maintenance, industrial electrician, and millwright. Decision lies with the Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training, Skills, and Development, and it is imperative that we, again, it is imperative that we, again, train our skilled trades for workforce locally, and we do not send future professionals away for training. We know all too well that if we send learners outside of the region, they are unlikely to return. This summer, we've also launched a creative arts program in Bellevue, Bancroft, Tainanega, and Port Hope. As interest in the program grows, we'd like to add a Prince Edward County location in the coming years. This is an elevated arts program instructed by renowned regional artists and aimed at lifelong learners in the community and beyond. One of the goals is to create an experience, not just within the classroom, but also within the community from which the program is offered, generating economic benefit for all. To support our vision of Loyalist College and the regions we serve, we continue to invest on our campuses with numerous facility upgrades, including new culinary labs, we have a new restaurant, new health and wellness wing, actually, there'll be two, that's supporting the new programming like MRT, pharmacy, advanced care, paramedic, and more. We've got new varsity and recreation spaces, both within the building, and new outdoor facilities for seating, broadcasting, and fields outside, that not only support Loyalist but the local communities. Our new gym is currently under renovation, and it will be second to none in the region. We continue to bring more students to our region, but we also continue to bring in more residence beds and add to our housing inventory across all of our campuses. This year alone, we'll have added over 100 new spaces for this academic year. So I hope this has given you a sense of Loyalist's capacity, expertise, leadership, and their sincere interest in supporting the region's communities we serve. We very much want to deepen our partnership with the county and work collaboratively on projects of mutual interest that will foster economic growth, drive innovation, and enhance the overall quality of life for residents. By leveraging our resources, expertise, and community connections, we aim to create sustainable opportunities and solutions that benefit everyone involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mark. Still had a minute and a half to go. If you had anything that you were, anything that you wanted, don't go anywhere just yet. Now's the opportunity for members of council to ask questions if they wish. Councilor Branderhorst.
Hi, thank you so much for your deputation. I've had many friends of mine go to Loyalist College and say on how much they've enjoyed their programs. So it's always, it's amazing to get to talk with you. I guess my question is, what's the wish list? If you could move forward and be like, this is what is the dream? And further on vision, what, how can we connect, support, see, where would you like to grow? How would you like to grow? What programs would you like to grow in? Like, are we thinking agriculture, wine, anything? Like, I'm just...
Hint, hint, right?
I mean, not like, I'm actually, like, residencies in here, like, how, like, what's the wish?
So, I mean, I think at the highest level, our wish, and this is something that's near and true to our heart right now, is we want to integrate with the communities that we serve. And we want to make sure that we can support and spread the economic benefit that the institution has across all the communities that we serve, as opposed to just really the Bellevue-Trenton area. And so one of the advantages, or one of the things why we like to get residents or get people in, is it gives people a sense of roots. And our students, as they say, we've got lots of anecdotal information that'll demonstrate. If we study and live in an area, we will stay. The college is very good these days about bringing young people into the region, not just international students, we bring young folks from all over the province and country that come to school here. A lot of them, if they want to stay, if they can find work, will stay. But part of finding work is the ability to get there and know that that's available. And that's why we're, these innovative programs that we're talking about, you know, and subsidizing, we're subsidizing transit to make sure that, that we can get students here. You know, the wish list would be someday, the, the, the upper levels of government would properly support transit, that'd be a big wish list, because that would allow us to actually integrate more into community. You know, at some point, we'd love to start teaching more and more at different places. We'll have to do it on a rotational basis just because of size, but one of the things we've also learned that all students aren't the same. Not every student comes to college for the full experience. Some just want to come to learn something. And so if you can restructure things and understand that demographic and figure out where to train, we can actually get very creative of how we do it. For example, our HVAC program, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, is actually taught at Tainanega. So we actually have our lab built in Tainanega, and that's where we do the training. They stay in residence in Bellevue, and we shuttle them back and forth for class. So it's, it's, I think our goal is really to support communities and make sure that you know all the things that we have. We want you all to be proud that you can say you have Loyalist in your backyard and that we can do whatever we can to support you.
Councilor Hirsch, and then Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mark. I think actually we should have you back about every year or so for an update, because this is the first time in my recollection that we've had a rundown on Loyalist. It's very interesting. So we have a wish list, whether or not you do. My understanding is that the principals of Base 31 have been interested and certainly were interested in whether there could be a possibility for a satellite campus at some point up on the hill. Is that, is that a real thing that's, that's happening?
I can tell you it's a real thing that we're having a conversation, yes. There's a lot that goes into it. I mean, we're just opening our campus, and I think I said this at one point, we're just opening a new campus in Port Hope. We'd like to kind of get that settled before we start anymore. It is a major investment, because the one thing we've always promised a community is if we, we start, we finish. We're not going to start, stop, start, stop. And so we want to make sure that we've got everything lined up and we understand exactly what it is and what we can do before we move forward. But, you know, things like getting more placements, getting a residence, the Creative Arts Program, which is, it's getting ConEd into the area that we do, are all first steps for us to understand what we can and what we cannot get done in the region.
Well, let us encourage. Thank you. Let's encourage that conversation.
It is ongoing.
Good.
Councilor Pennell.
Mine is more of a comment than a question, but from the beginning of Loyalist College, it was the central part of Ontario that seemed to benefit. Then all of a sudden, it was province-wide. Now we're covering Canada-wide, and I have a few relatives that live in other countries, and I'm finding that Loyalist is benefiting them as well. I think it says a lot of what I think everyone at the table wants, and that's something for a future for you. And in a partnership, perhaps any way that the county can help, I'm certain Mayor and Council would do that. But it says a lot, and it makes us proud to see where Loyalist has come from, follow them through the state, and I'm so glad that, under new direction again, that you're headed bigger and better. And that's what it's all about, and that's important not only to Prince Edward, all municipalities across the province and countrywide. So thank you.
Thank you for the comments. But I'll just make one other one. As much as we do have an impact in a very large region across this country, which is true, especially our research arm, we are a community college, and I am proud to use the word "community." I do not run away from that word. We are here for the benefits of the communities that we serve, period.
Let's see if anybody else wishes, and then I'll come back to you on the second round. Councilor Grosso.
I have a great project for some of the HVAC students. Be a great co-op situation.
Anytime there's an opportu, I mean, now, seriousness, anytime there's opportunities for students to get summer work replacements, that's great. I mean, we do like to make sure our HVAC students finish the course. There are a lot of employers that try to pull them out in year one versus year two because they're in such high demand, but, yes.
Anyone else on the first round? Mayor Ferguson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks a lot, Mark, for coming and talking up Loyalist. The, the nursing program that used to be, I won't say joint venture, but it was a certain amount of training at Loyalist and then the completion program in Brock, and as you mentioned, deputation, once those people migrate, they tend to stay in that community, so that everybody's going to encourage that. Are there, and that is a degree program, right?
It's a four-year degree.
Okay. Are there, are there plans for, to add additional degree programs like that?
Yeah, we, as we round out our diploma and advanced diploma programming, we will be looking to, we have the ability to, and we will be looking, and we're actually developing some now, I just don't want to talk about them really, but we are in the process of visiting and developing new degree-based programming that would serve the community well. The difference between us and the university is our degrees need to be applied degrees versus some of the ones that you do in a university. So there's a bit of a difference in how we teach them, but we have the ability to apply degrees and applied masters as well.
Right, okay. Just a quick follow-up, just the, oh, sorry, yeah. I should, shouldn't know that by now. The, the, that's very good news, that that's going to occur. Is that going to be similar to what occurred with the nursing program with Brock? So this would be strictly new?
No, it would be 100% Loyalist, start to finish.
Yeah, okay.
And just to go back in your nursing comment, you're right, and this, you could talk to Stacy Dobb at Queenie Health, I'm going to get the numbers wrong a bit. But two years ago, when our students were graduating out of, out of Brock, I think they ended up hiring one Loyalist graduate, Loyalist Brock graduate. This year was our, this summer was our first graduating class of the four-year BSCN nursing program. I believe they hired something like 30 nurses. So that's, that's what I mean, where they study, they stay. And it's really, and it's where they study and get the opportunity to do placements is even more attractive.
That's terrific. It's very exciting. Thanks very much.
Back to you, Councilor Branderhorst.
My question was just answered by the President when I was just going to say, what was the, I did hear about the four-year nursing program, so I was curious to see what was the stay rate in comparison, knowing now that they're not having to go to Brock University anymore, but...
Yeah, we also implemented upgrading too. So now we've got programs, if you're a practical nurse, to upgrade to a registered nurse, and if you're a PSW, to upgrade into a practical nurse. So all the programs that actually continue to grow the healthcare workforce here, we're pushing as hard as we can. And that's what all the new, all those 13 programs I talked about are all relative to health and wellness.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, I do have a question or two for you, Mark. In your presentation, you mentioned skilled trades and expanding on that, that component of the education system, programming. And I'm not sure if you read our agenda, but it's certainly pertinent, given that our items for consideration include a business retention and expansion, construction and trades survey that was done. So I think you know where I'm going with this. So you mentioned it in your presentation, and I know it's rather preliminary where you're at in the planning and implementation of all that, but can you, do you have any kind of a timeline that you might be able to assign to that, just in general? I'm not going to pin you to something. And on, as well, would any of those, any of that curriculum be included in, say, an off-site campus program that maybe leads to a red seal for, for some of the participants?
I'm not going to be able to comment on the red seal yet, because we have to see where we get to. So we do have a lot of skills program, right? So like the HVAC, we talked a bit into ago, we've got carpentry and electrical and a whole bunch of mechatronics, a whole bunch of skilled-based programs. So what I was mentioning is apprenticeship, so all those, let me back up, all those programs run through the Ministry of Colleges and Universities. So there's an approval process we go through there. Anything that's apprenticeship relation has to go through a different ministry, which is the Ministry of Immigration, Training, and Skills Development. And so we've been working approximately two years to get approval on those three apprentices. And so I have, I am hopeful soon, I am phoning whoever I can phone as regularly as I can phone them, to get them done and approve so that we can launch. We, we literally in a position, we could launch, like, the semester, or as soon as we know, the next semester, we're ready to go. Like, we're, we're anticipating we will get a yes. There's a much different, longer process to get approval for a trades program. It's, it's not the simplest thing in the world, as far as where we teach them. So we have a workforce development or skills training group in addition to our, our academic teams. We're not there yet, and we're just in the very infancy of exploring, because we understand there's a need, especially in a lot of communities in that region I just talked about earlier, to provide this training. But there's not enough people to sustain that training year over year over year. So, you know, we're looking at all kinds of ways to figure out, how do we rotate training from community to community year over year? So it could be in Community A this year, Community B, Community C, then we come back to Community A. And then what's the mobile type of teaching unit we would need to actually move from point A to point B to point C? Once we figure that out, then we'll have to come and say we bring some of that here. We'd have to sit down with yourselves and say, okay, where do we park it? Where do I get the power for it? Like, we'd have to work with the local communities and figure out how to make that all happen, but it's, it's, we're in a kind of the walk-before-you-run stage, we're just trying to really figure this out. But we would love, and we've had lots of discussions in terms, our, our real desire is to be able to take those type of programs and move them around communities that need them, because it's hard to get around here. I don't mean just here, by the way, I'm talking all of Hastings, sorry, I should have clarified that statement.
Yeah. I'm, I guess as a follow-up question with regards to, to trying to get you more support to, to encourage a more prompt decision from, from the various ministries that you're having to deal with, would it be helpful, well, I guess in my mind, it would be helpful if all of the municipalities within your catchment area jumped on the bandwagon and made sure that we're advocating at every opportunity?
Your mayor's already signed a letter.
Yes, that I'm aware of. I'm just not aware of the other communities in the area.
No, no, every, we've gone through all the communities, I mean, we've gone through all the communities that, that, that we support to get support. There's not anybody that doesn't want us to be able to do this. So it's just, it's been a long time since Loyalist has actually gotten a new apprenticeship program. So it's kind of revving that whole engine back up, and it takes a while to get it going and get the contacts, the ministries, and everything else. But I, I think we're in a good spot now, but trust me, we will reach out the second that we think it would be advantageous.
Perfect, thank you. Councilor McNamara.
Thank you. Just a quick question at the end, sorry to come in in a third wave. So you do, with your satellite programs in other communities currently that are a little bit farther flung, like you've got students that are working in Northumberland in particular, where do they actually live when they're doing that? Is there...
So you mean that we have, so we have a campus in, a small campus in Port Hope. So the question is, where do they live?
Do you have residences already built and established that are owned by Loyalist College in Port Hope?
Yes, in both, in partnerships. So we, we've done...
In partnership. In partnership.
We've actually owned some. I was just actually telling someone when I came in today, we just bought another building. And so we take ownership of that, and that's more housing. But we also have gotten agreements with developers. So as they're developing, you know, some communities, we will lease the buildings for five years from them, and then we will use them as residences.
With the option to, I'm sorry to get specific, with the option to renew presumably?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and so the other thing we do with those areas, because transit's a problem, because if they're in Coburg, let's say, and I got to get into Port Hope, we like that because there's fewer stops for the transit program I have to run. Because I'm not really liking being in the transit business, I'll be honest with you.
Not necessarily what you were--
It's not what we're set up to do, but we have to, like, that's what we have to do to support our community, so that's what we do. It's that simple.
Turbo-busting is something that's part of campus life often--
It is, and so--
But that's quite a long distance.
Yeah, it's not too far, so, you know, like, the distance between Coburg and on the shuttle service and Port Hope and the campus is arguably about the same timeframe as from here to Belleville. So most, and it's a direct route in both cases, so students actually don't mind it because I don't have to stop and transfer and get around. It's like, I just get on, I go to sleep for half an hour, and I'm in there, or I'm not going to miss my stop because I'm not stopping anywhere else. So it does work. But yeah, so we work with industry to partner, and or we will purchase if needed.
Thank you.
Counselor Maynard?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. When you talk about working with trades that require apprenticeships, so is it limited to ones, because generally those apprenticeships are on the job, the majority, you know, they're three, four thousand, and then, you know, a small portion of an in-class? How, so is there just certain trades that you'll be able to work with and some not?
So right now, we've got three in, which I talked to you about. I don't believe, mill rates is not a mandatory or compulsory trade, I don't believe right now, but the other two are. So our focus will going, so what we focused on is what could we deliver tomorrow? So if somebody gave us the approval, could I get it up and running tomorrow? So those are the ones we focused in on. You are 100% correct that a, an apprentice isn't just going to college and doing the apprenticeship training, there is a work component that is required. And that's why we have got letters between all the trades, I think it's up to 70 different regional companies who've already said, if Loyalist gets this, we will send our, we will send our students there. The ones that we want apprenticeship, we'll give them the training in our business, but we're going to send them to Loyalist and get their training that'll get them over the final hump to get their papers. I would like to believe that once we get these approved, we will start looking at the other mandatory trades to see if we can get the apprenticeship training as well brought to our region.
Sorry, just clarification, when you say mandatory trades--
So, for example, you can't be an electrician unless you've gone through an apprenticeship. You can't say you're an electrician unless you've gone through, but you can say you're a carpenter and not gone through a carpentry apprentice. It's a non-mandatory trade. That's what, that's the difference. One, you can say you are without getting in trouble, one, you can say you are and you don't get in trouble. That's the simplest way to put it, I guess.
Okay, does, are there any further questions from members of council? No? Okay, thank you very much, Mark.
And more than welcome to come back, and anybody who would love to come visit the college, just let us know, we'd love to set up a tour and walk you around.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, so I now need a motion, mover and seconder to receive the, Merrick Ferguson and Counselor McNaughton.
Ferguson, McNaughton motion a deputation by Mark Patrick, President and CEO, Loyalist College regarding Loyalist College programs and local workforce skills development be received.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, agenda item 4.2, another deputation from Bill Wibenga, President and Greg Locke, Board Member, Prince Edward Common Element Condominium Corporation Number 15, to address committee regarding request for municipal garbage and recyclable waste collection for the freehold homes within the Port Picton developments. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
And as I mentioned to Mr. Kirk Patrick, you have 10 minutes, and I'll give you a 30-minute warning.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak to council today. As you mentioned, my name is Bill Wibenga, and I'm the President of the Condominium Corporation, rather long handle, Prince Edward Common Element Condominium Corporation 15, but we didn't choose the name, so forgive us for that. We, as the condo corporation, are responsible for most of the facilities and the services in the Port Picton Housing Development, such as water, sewer, streets, lighting and snow clearing. Upon the residents taking over the condo corporation from the developer, we found that many provincially mandated regulations had been ignored and oversight of service contracts by the developer and the management company were not up to standard. Information that should have been turned over to the condo corporation over a year ago is still outstanding. As a result, we have only recently uncovered the subdivision agreement between Prince Edward County and the developer, a numbered company with several shareholders. It states quite clearly that upon start of residential occupancy, that the municipality will provide garbage and organic collection and blue box recycling pickup. Condominium Corporation now simply asks that the municipality accepts its responsibility two years later than the agreed-to trigger and the start to collection service as soon as possible. Our Secretary Greg Locke will now review and highlight some of the background that led to this deputation. Greg?
My name is, my name is Greg Locke, and I live at 73B Bridge Street, which is just up on the other side of the hill here. I've been there for three years, and I'm also a business instructor at Loyalist, so it was really nice to see Mark here, my big boss, talking about the community. So this is really good. I'm going to try to make it really simple, because it can get complicated talking about that issue, but basically, the situation is that we're a mixed-use development, as you know, Port Picton. There are multi-level condominiums, two presently, one that's fully constructed, one that's under construction, and there will be one or two more. They're not what we're here to talk about today, because they are requiring their own private garbage service. What we're talking about here is 21 freehold, either townhomes or individual homes, that we would like to ask the township if they could extend garbage collection to us. We weren't aware, actually, that the township had agreed to that in our subdivision agreement. We just recently discovered that, because as Bill mentioned, there was a very sloppy turnover of documents between the developer and our initial property management company, which is not our property management company now, by the way, we had to terminate them. But what we did have to do, or what was done for us, was that a very lucrative contract was signed between our original property management company and Waste Management, which is only pretty much one of two companies you can deal with in this area, and it basically requires us to pay about $3,000 a month for 21 homes, which works out to about $144 a house, which is, and we really only have one opportunity to deal with that, which is to terminate within the first full year of the contract. We have an opportunity to do that under the conduit. So we've been up against a bit of a wall to try to figure out a solution or an interim solution. So we approached the county a couple of months ago and had talked about the ideas, is it possible that we could have this taken over? We received an initial idea that, yes, this is possible, but we received a few challenges. One with, initially was that, well, we're private property, and we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to extend service to, on private lands with your waste bylaw, wouldn't be able to accommodate that. Another one is just that we don't normally do that, and we discovered that, while you agreed to it in the subdivision agreement, you have the right to enter our grounds for a number of reasons that are included in the subdivision agreement. So remember, too, it's not just about garbage, there are three municipal parquettes that are completed or under construction that the township will have to enter and maintain. There's also parking spots in there that will have to be maintained. And also, even though they're public roads, they are open to the public. So there's going to be a lot of public access, and we believe that we've got that element covered. So quite simply, what we would like to ask is, is could you give us some relief in the interim and in the long term? Could you extend your services to our 21 freehold townhomes and any additional ones? I believe that there's, under the current site plan, there's room for six more. And could it be done immediately? And the reason I say that is because one of the objections is that because there's this perception that our Common Element Condo Corporation is the vehicle within which you would do an agreement for garbage collection, our argument is, don't get caught up in that, because garbage collection isn't even mentioned in our condominium charter. We're not actually formally responsible for it. What we would like to do is to say, your agreement will be with 21 individual homeowners, just like you have now with other homeowners in the county, and it's billed through the tax roll. And actually, we're paying it too through the tax roll. We don't believe there's any mechanism to separate out homes that are getting municipal service and those who are not. So if there is an individual, a separate contract made to enact the service, we have some concerns. One is that, would we be paying a rate different than any other resident for the same service? We have, there's a possibility that we could be paying more, which we don't think would be equitable. And the second one is that, how would you bill it? If we have to pay separately, we would then have to ask you to have a look at our mill rates and be able to give us a refund, because otherwise, it's a double dip, it's a double charge. And that's already been challenged, as we know, in some municipalities like Kingston, where they were forced to give a refund. So that is a ball of wax, nobody really wants to go down. So quite simply, could you extend us the service? Could you do it soon? And any complications with regard to other developments or potential developments? We just think that's something that we would really like not to have to wait for, because we would like to get out of this contract and get on with it. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Members of council, questions? I'm going to go to Counselor McNaughton, and then over to Counselor Pennell, and then Counselor Nyman.
So just to add a little bit of context, Counselor St. Jean and I have had an opportunity to meet with staff from the Development Services Department about this. And it, as it seemed very clear to me, looking at the clause that we have from the subdivision agreement, that there's, there's an opportunity here that, as it says on page, pardon me, page 11 of the agenda, that there's an opportunity here to, to work, to work in this area and to be providing, as it says, be, the municipality will provide garbage and organics collection and blue box recycling pickup at the owner's expense, and the owner agrees that the provision of garbage, et cetera. So, so we do, on some level, need to find that pathway forward, and I think the quickest possible way is, is going to be necessary here. I'll have a motion at some point, but just, I think what it also does is point out where we should be looking to ensure any similar subdivisions going forward or any similar agreements going forward, need to sort of have some protocol in place that's quite separate from the ask from the people bringing the deputation. But I think it is sort of a gift to us to understand how, how we need to have this ironed out so that it's very clear when duties of, when assumption of duties do happen. I think we should view this as a bit of an opportunity to, to review our own processes going forward in that regard. But I'll have a motion regarding how we get from A to B when everyone else has had their opportunity to speak.
Did you have a question for Greg as well?
I, I didn't, because I've already spoken too long, but, but I might later on.
Okay. Counselor Pennell, and then Counselor Nyman.
I have a little different position here. I believe before we're asking a lot of questions--
Counselor Pennell? A question for the, we're questioning the deputant right now?
Yeah.
Any comments or--
Let me--
Let's do that at the point we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah. I'm going to ask the deputant if, in fact, the county has responded that they feel it's legal or not. I get a little concerned when we start talking what potentially is a legal problem. I'm not certain, you know, I got a piece of paper that says why, but I don't feel confident that it's legal or not legal. I don't know for sure. But it makes a little hesitation as we move forward until I get clarification on that. And up till that, I don't think we should be discussing it.
That's it. Okay. Question for the deputant, Ms. Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make sure I understand. You're in a condo agreement or no?
I, we are members of a corporation that's governed under the Condominium Act, and what it does is it governs the common elements of the property, okay? So I own my own home, and I'm responsible for all the maintenance of my own home and cutting my own grass in front of my house. However, the condominium corporation is responsible for snow removal, landscaping, we have a private water and wastewater management system that we have to manage, things like that. It doesn't actually talk about garbage, interestingly, and we're thinking likely it was because it was foreseen through the subdivision agreement that that service would be provided by the municipality. So if I'm a, if I'm a vertical-rise condominium, like what they call the Taylor and the Carter Building, they are also members of this Common Element Corporation. But on top of that, they also have their own condominium corporation that manages their own facility, their own building, so their reserve study, their reserve plan, you know, who cleans the hallways, who repairs the building. So in that context, they are a little bit, they are a little bit different. But I'm an individual homeowner, as is Bill, as is other people in the room here, and we have a municipal address, and we have a tax roll number, and we pay taxes just like everybody else, but we're not getting the service. So really, what we're saying is, you know, could we please have our service?
I have a quick follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you. So I guess, if, I remember, this whole development is a private development, I think, but I'm just wondering, so how did you get to the situation where you've paid or you've contracted a company to come in and pick up the garbage or the waste, I guess? I guess I'm not following that process.
Well, keep in mind, the developer, Port Picton, is basically the board of the Common Element Corporation prior to what they call the turnover date, okay? Well, there's what's called a turnover meeting, so prior to me becoming a board member, as is Bill, as is Scott, who's sitting in the room here, the developer was the de facto condo corporation, okay? And he's responsible for basically paying for any responsibilities of that corporation prior to it being turned over to the members, basically. So now we're responsible for it. And by the way, the Port Picton still has one board member on our, on our organization. They initially hired a property management company who, I think, who was not really terribly well-managed, by the way. We weren't terribly happy with them, we ended up terminating them, but what they did do is they entered into an agreement for garbage collection the day before our turnover meeting. And it was an agreement that pretty much gave that garbage company everything they could possibly want, a very high rate. They had the ability to escalate or increase their pricing. We have very few opportunities to get out of the agreement, which is why it's important and incumbent upon us to come up with at least an interim solution. So we had thought initially, who says that we have to have our own private collection? And we looked into it, and we realized that there was nothing in our condo documents that stated that we were responsible for that. But then eventually, we landed on a copy of our subdivision agreement, and then we saw that, in fact, the intention was to have the municipality take over collection. And we thought, well, geez, we've been doing this all along, we should go to the township and let them know about this, maybe there's a solution here that we could work out. And we also know that through that subdivision agreement, if there's any issues of access, we've already provided you with the right of access. And if there was an issue of insurance, we'd be quite willing to name the county as a named insurer on our insurance policy. But beyond that, what we've realized is that we're a bit caught up in this fact that the relationship with us as individual homeowners is through this condominium corporation. We are members of that, but what we're saying is that we don't think that's the issue. You can deal, you will be dealing with, directly with-- You can deal, you will be dealing with, with, directly with individual homeowners like myself, through the tax roll. So we don't think that the condo corporation issue is something that really is important. I think it's been a bit of a distraction, because it brings in the idea, oh, you need to have an agreement with condo corporation. We don't think you do. We think you have everything in place you need to do it now. And if we could keep it simple, we could get service up simply, and bill it through our existing tax roll system, and it, it becomes a very easy, a very easy thing to administer. Otherwise, we get into issues of disparities, where we're being billed for two services, or maybe we're paying more or less for a service than anyone else in the county would be. It just seems so simple that all the pieces are there to enable you just to have the trucks roll in and, and pick up our garbage now.
And just to clarify a little bit there, the, when, before the turnover meeting, which happens after we have 50% occupancy in the uni, in the units that we're talking about, the contractor, the developer, was picking up all the garbage for us, and dealing with that. And then just at the turnover meeting, they contracted that out, because now they're not responsible for it anymore, so. But not having all these agreements, the development agreement and everything, we just accepted that, okay, that's, that's what it is. And then we finally got this development agreement and found there, black and white, that the municipality is gonna take over once residents start moving in. So, it's, it's been kind of a convoluted process. We had this deputation started before we found that agreement.
Thank you. I'll wait for the motion.
Okay. Any further questions from members of council? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Council McNauton, I'm gonna go to you.
Sure, and I think the clerk has-
You guys can sit down.
Thank you very much, by the way. So I, I think the clerk has a couple of, so the wording I would propose might be a little bit different than what's available here.
The glare off the lights.
You know what, Becky, leave it for now, except for the date. So I would propose that, that that change to, I'm not quite sure what the contractual obligations are with the private collector, but I would suggest by the end of September 2024, and that we would receive a report, and that we could look at the details and the alternatives at that time, but try to get some, some understanding relatively quickly, so that we know what our responsibilities are, and ensure we're meeting them, and ensure that any fees as required, that we can ensure that there's a fair pathway forward.
So, this is your motion, then, Council McNauton? Double-check the wording to make sure it is what you intend. Before I ask for a second here.
I, it was not necessarily exactly the wording that I was going to seek, but I think this wording will cover potential alternatives, so that we can find a, a proper, fair and equitable, and path forward that meets our contractual obligations as municipality under their subdivision agreement.
Okay. And I, I do wanna, before I ask for a second, or I do, as we're work crafting the wording, I do wanna verify with CIO that the timeline is appropriate.
Through the chair to council, as this matter has been discussed with the condo corporation, and, and we are aware of it, we can make an end of September deadline.
Thank you, that's great to confirm.
Just gonna wait till Council Harrison's phone gets shut off. Okay. Thank you, Council Harrison. Council Pennell, did I see your hand up, Council Grossman? No, anything? Okay.
I just, on the particular motion, I don't think-
Actually, I'm sorry to, I've made an error here. I need a second here before we can start discussing the motion.
I'll second it.
You'll second it? Perfect, thank you. I don't want the clerk to get angry with me.
Anyway, in that motion, the council for the feasibility of municipal garbage and recycling. Really all, I think we should be getting at this point is, is it our responsibility? If it is, then we got no choice but to do it. But to look at, you know, just exploring the feasibility of a picking it up type of deal, that's open to any day of the week. And I feel it should be just a report on this particular property. If we're wrong, we're wrong.
Thank you. Council Nyman? Did you, you wish to jump in here?
No, you, you asked my question, but I'm just, no, I'm, I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Council Maynard, you, and then I'll come to you, Council McNauton.
Maybe, not to wordsmith, and I don't know which word, which, what to replace it with, but when it says feasibility, I think, is it feasibility, or is it the requirement to? When I, because when I look at the subdivision agreement that we have here in front of us that says pickup at the owner's expense, so I'm not sure whether feasible, whether it's actually required or not. And we look at, yeah, feasibility and, and precedence, right? Because people on private lanes are going to the dump, there's other, there's other precedents, and there's many areas in the county where residents pay in, in common for, for services that they, that they do not receive. So, just caution that we not open the floodgates. That's just some direction to, I guess, is feasibility the correct word to use there?
Is, I guess you're, you're asking a, a question of the CIO, or?
Well, I think that, it sounds like the mover and the second don't agree with the wording, so I would ask that perhaps, if you give us a clearer sense of what the intended outcome is, we absolutely can adjust the wording here.
So-
Go ahead, Council McNauton.
Thank you. So, it's very close, and would, I think feasibility would cover off the word responsibility, to understand the responsibility, or to look for a pathway forward, because it is covered off in a couple of locations, in that there are some contractual opportunities that the, that this particular group can access. And one of the difficulties talking about it with staff is that we didn't, is that there are many different levels of contractual obligation, but to me, looking at the subdivision agreement itself, it seems to, it seems to be sort of maybe that top level of agreement. I, I think the report would be relatively simple. It is something that's been explored by staff. They've had a considerable look at it. But it would allow council to see what our responsibility is, what our risk could be, and what the pathway forward, what the best pathway forward or alternatives would be.
Council Nyman?
Thank you. Yeah, I did think of a question. So I, I guess what I, what I'm looking for, I'm just listening, but the way I'm reading that is, what I would need to see is to have staff come back with, what is, what are we responsible for, and is it just this block of homes, or is it the whole development? So I, I don't, I don't want to have something to say, yeah, we're going to do this, unless I know exactly what it is that we're tying ourselves into. So that's what I would need in that report, for me.
Okay. Council Pennell, and then come back to you, Council Maynard.
I would suggest on that particular motion, and I'll ask the counselor who moved it, I believe it should basically be the council direct staff to bring back a report for the end of September meeting, outlining whether, what the county responsibilities are legally. That sound normal?
While it's not specifically in the wording, I'm just gonna jump in and say, I think that would be included regardless, would it not, as part of potential recommendations?
Through the chair to council and Council Pennell, the way I read this, feasibility is suggesting that, how could this happen? How do we, how could we possibly do this? Where Council Pennell is saying, what is our responsibility in this space? So, if the motion was something like, to not rewrite the whole motion, but maybe say something like, to explore the county's responsibility in municipal garbage and recyclable waste collection, you would still get a recommendation from us in terms of how we think the county should move forward, and it would include the legal issue around, the legal exploration around this issue. If you leave it at feasibility, it, it is leaning us towards looking for a solution to be able to take on this service without pre-determining that outcome. So, that's, that's the difference, I think, in terms of the wording. But either way, your report absolutely will include an analysis of our legal responsibility, and will include some recommendations from staff. That's why I wasn't too worried about the wording, but if you are trying to convey a message, then that could be, be, the wording could be adjusted.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity, Madam CIO. Did you have anything further to add, Council Maynard?
Yeah, maybe just to, to try and simplify it, if we leave feasibility in, and say feasibility and implications, if that, if that's amenable to the mover?
That would be, that would be amenable. I'd be amenable.
It's, yeah, it's-
I would be amenable to that.
And, and does that work for staff? If we just insert the, sorry, if we just, if we use, explore the feasibility and implications?
Through the chair, it, I think the question needs to be directed to Council Pennell, since he is the second. It is not what staff think.
Okay. No, oh, sorry, I was asking, Council McNauton, if him-
Start with the mover-
I've already responded, I'm amenable to that change to include implications, and then that'll cover a broader range of, maybe.
As the second year, Council Pennell, are you okay with, with adding that word? Or, have you done that?
(inaudible)
So are we, are we adding any further language to this motion?
Well, we need another second.
Before, before I continue on with any more debate on the motion, I need clarity on the actual wording of the motion. I need a new second, or Council Hirsch will second what is on the screen currently.
And then through the chair, if it's agreeable with the mover and second, or I'll amend what's on the screen, and then we can decide if that's how we wanna move forward.
Let's see all the language, please, yes.
So, if I might speak to this just briefly, and direct my comments to staff, I, I think this works very well. The one thing I would caution is, I would want this to relate to this development specifically, and not every condominium corporation in, in the, I, I don't want it to be talking about knock-on effects regarding other areas. What we have determined with staff already is that every agreement is its own agreement, and I would like to stay focused on this agreement and this collection of, of responsibilities.
Madam CIO?
Through the chair to Council McNauton. Respectfully, there, we always need to look at the risks and implications broader. We have to look at every situation for the, its site-specific merit, but we also have an obligation to tell you the implications. So, I, I cannot say that we will intentionally not look at similar circumstances that would have a ripple effect, that would be us not doing our job as staff. But, I, I did hear from the proponent, they're looking for a quick decision. I did commit to a September report, so if there are broader implications, we will certainly work to see what can be done in this particular situation, what makes it unique or similar, and, and give you some clear direction, so you can make a decision on the Port Picton situation, and not be tangled up in a larger conversation.
Exactly. Thank you very much. Happy to have those risks, risks presented, if there are, just trying to keep it simple and straightforward, if possible. Thanks.
Okay. Council Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I, I'm along same lines as Council Pennell, that it's not up to us to find a solution. The developer was there, there was an agreement. We need to know what our obligation is. We're not finding solutions. That should have been done by the developer, and, and the condo corporation, or whoever's doing that. What we need to know is what our obligation is, is that if our obligation is to pick up the garbage from these freehold homes, and it's the whole site, then we need to know that. Or is it just this particular block, where it's, I don't know, seven houses or whatever, 21 houses? Then that's what we need to know. We don't wanna get into a situation where we're agreeing to pick up a whole bunch of stuff that we didn't have to. So that's what we need to know.
Any further comments from members of council, before I call the vote? Seeing none? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, I have seven. That carries. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Next on the agenda-
Through the chair, we still need to receive the deputation.
You're right. This is an amendment to the, to the motion, or are we treating it as a standalone motion?
We can treat it as standalone.
Okay. So then I need a, I need a motion to receive the deputation of mover and second, or Council McNauton, and Council Pennell?
Thank you, the McNauton-Pennell motion, that the deputation by Bill Wabanga, President and Greg Locke Board Member, Prince Edward Common Element Comminium, Condominium Corporation Number 15, regarding their request for municipal garbage and recyclable waste collection for the freehold homes within the Port Picton development be received.
All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Comments from the audience, items on the agenda? Anyone, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on any of the items on the agenda? Seeing none, then we shall move on to Agenda Item Six, Items for Consideration. Report to the Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated July 25th Regarding Skilled Trades and Construction Business Retention and Expansion Survey Results. And we have our Economic Development Officer here. Karen, welcome.
Thank you.
And you have some backup here, I believe, in a couple of, I see Mr. Farrell, who was heavily involved in the, the surveys that were done. So, given, given the extent of this report, if you could just walk us through it, and just to make sure that everybody has a complete understanding of where we are right now.
Sure.
I'll pass it over to you, Karen.
Great, thank you. So I did just wanna acknowledge that Mike Farrell is in the back of the gallery there, and he was really integral to both designing the survey and implementing it. Sitting with him is Summer Pringle, who's been working with us on a summer placement, and has added so much capacity to our little economic development team, and I really appreciate the hard work that she's put on this. And then sitting in front of them is Duarte De Silva. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, he is the new CEO of the PEC Chamber of Commerce, and he joined us on our steering committee, so helping us figure out what our recommendations would be ultimately. So key findings from this are essentially that, in the skilled trades and construction sector, workforce is still a challenge. This is sort of a nationwide issue, just not enough people in the trades, still really seeking specialized workers, whether that's drywallers, finishing carpenters. Housing seems to be the biggest challenge in terms of both recruiting and retaining skilled workers. I kinda think of it as a bit of a chicken and egg thing. We need people to actually build the housing, but they need the housing to be here to build the housing. Most operators are saying that they're still pretty affected by supply chain issues, inflation, interest rates, things like that. Several noted that they're still looking for spaces. It was interesting to sort of ask the question, you know, would you be looking to expand? What would you be looking for if you were to expand a couple- A couple told us that, you know, I haven't really been thinking about expansion, because I don't see a place to expand. So we heard that in our last survey, that, you know, employment lands, the lack of employment lands are sort of hindering expansion. The feedback on training was a little bit mixed. We had a lot of people sort of say to us, you know what, if you just give me a body who shows good work ethic, willing to get up, you know, every day and show up, we will mold them into who we need to be. But with that, you know, a little more asking questions, people would certainly be interested in having some training that would make people site-ready from day one. I hadn't realized before doing this study that you need to have at heights training to even get on a ladder. So there really are some things that are pretty basic. What we learned in actually putting the report together is just how challenging it can be to get into the apprenticeship pipeline. So it is really great to hear that Loyalist is already thinking about this, and figuring out ways to help people get into that. It's really on the individual, if they're not going through a program like Loyalist, to try and find an employer to sponsor their apprenticeship, which can be the most challenging part of it. And I think the last thing I would say is that, you know, respondents certainly had a lot of great things to say about the new iCloud permitting system, they like the ability to do that online, and like the ability to track where they're at in that process. But there were certainly lots of comments about needing, you know, would, people would appreciate some service upgrades in terms of how their experience is happening. So out of this, we're basically recommending that we look at ways to integrate economic development, building, engineering, and planning, just to have a better overall experience for business operators. We're thinking about an employment lands needs study for 2025, essentially to sort of figure out where, how much, that sort of thing. As we grow, we know that we'll be having more housing, so where are people going to actually locate businesses that would allow them to pay for that housing? And thinking about temporary housing options, and basically I've worded in this, in the recommendation, that we look at exploring it. There's a lot of different people who I think we need to weigh in on, whether this is something that would be possible. We just know that a few developers said to us, we're going to have to rely on people coming in from the GTA to get this, to get our development built. So whatever we could do to make ourselves look a little more attractive, you know, and keep some of the spending that tradespeople might do when they're in our community, in our community, as opposed to staying in Belleville and spending on meals there, and Napanee and spending on meals there, it's an option that I think we could explore.
Okay. Thank you for that synopsis of a very extensive report. Madam Clerk, should we be putting the motion on the floor prior to questions and from members of council?
Through the chair, yes, please.
Okay, all right, so I'll need a mover and secondor for the recommended motions. Councillor Nyman? Councillor Grosso?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's a Nyman-Grosso motion, that council receive report CSP 142024, that council direct staff to use 2024 rural economic development funding to engage a qualified consultant to review and recommend improvements to economic development, development services and planning policies and procedures with the aim of improving, or with the aim of improved service for the business community. That council direct staff to build an inventory of existing vacant or underutilized public and private lands zoned for industrial, manufacturing, or employment use, and where there is owner permission, promote available properties on the doing business section of the corporate website. That council direct staff to include funds in the 2025 draft budget to engage in qualified specialists to gauge future employment land needs, and direct staff to include commercial development requirements and design guidelines based on these findings, when updating the Picton, Wilder, and Rossmore secondary plans as scheduled in 2024 and 2025. And that council direct staff to explore measures to allow temporary housing for skilled trades and construction workers at active housing development sites, and return to council in early 2025 with recommendations.
Thank you. I always go to the mover, any questions at this point, councillor Nyman, since it's your motion?
Yeah, I guess.
And then I'll, then I'll open up to the rest of the council.
Just, just a quick one.
Secondor is councillor Grosso. Go ahead.
Okay, just a quick question, so most of it is around skilled trades. So I guess, what happens if there, and this is typical hypothetical question, so what happens if there's a slowdown in the building boom, and we don't need all these skilled trades? What else are we trying to promote, or trying to get things going?
Well, I think this is a perfectly valid point. Oh, sorry, through the chair to councillor Nyman, one of these days, I'm really going to learn that. This is a valid concern, I think, with the housing market in Toronto being as stagnant as it is, there's some worries that housing will slow, and that people will leave the sector. I think a lot about the housing that is being proposed, and what people will be doing, you know, to attract. I'm working on an economic development action plan, I'm calling it, that I'm hoping to return to council in late fall, that will sort of outline some of the things that we're hoping to do, and some of the areas that we think we could potentially grow into.
Okay, now I'm getting a list here, so hang on. So I have councillor Hirsch, councillor Pennell, councillor Maynard, and then councillor Brandhorst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Karen, for this report. It's really, there's a lot of detail, a lot of fascinating results, I think, from the surveys, and I support, I support the motions. But just a question, why do we think there wasn't such a great response to the survey? Twenty-two respondents is not a lot, and you noted that in the report. Do we, do we know why, or can we think of a better way to do this in future that would bring out more, more responses?
I mean, I think there's two, sorry, through the chair, I think there are two reasons that this might be the case. One is people are really busy, really hard to pin down, mostly working out of their vehicles, and moving from one site to the other. So as we noted in here, each of these interviews took an hour or longer, which is a big ask of people who are out there working and already struggling. I think the second is that some people have a bit of a cynical outlook on whether participating in the survey will actually lead to any changes for their business. So it's on us, or, you know, to really sort of demonstrate that, okay, we've heard you, and now these are the things that we're doing in response.
Councillor Pennell, then councillor Maynard?
I personally have great concerns in supplying temporary houses for outside workers if we go within a 60-mile radius of Prince Edward County. We've got every possible person available, and if they're not, then I don't think there should be any support from us to bring in workers from long distances. I think that should be the responsibility of the contractor, because I guarantee you, for every cent they'll save, they're not going to drop the prices down. So what is the benefit to the taxpayers of Prince Edward County to be looking for temporary houses? It puts us in a position where the contractors, developers could very easily say, well, you know what, I'll bring everybody in. Forget about Prince Edward County, Hastings, Prince Edward, Northumberland, Kingston, they're all within distance, and you're talking mega people. So that's my thought, and I will not support it for that part.
Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, I'll start then on the, on the, on the temporary housing. In my opinion, any temporary housing would only be for the, the non-skilled workers, because the skilled tradespeople that are ticketed, licensed, are not going to be living in, in temporary, in temporary housing. Typically, they are put up in hotels by their, by their employer or their sponsor, and unless you're looking at a work camp in Northern Ontario, it's, it's highly unlikely that the skilled labors, you may get general labors that might, might, might be in that situation, but that, but certainly not skilled, skilled labors. And, and I, I worry that if, I guess it would be a zoning allowance or something, but I worry that, that there's any responsibility on the, on the county for conditions of said, of said work camps. So that's on that point. On the, I know we spoke about this, but number four, the, the funds for the 2025 draft budget to engage qualified specialists to gauge in future employment land needs, what, what is that figure approximately?
So I would say, looking around at other communities that have done this work, it could be up to $100,000.
And, okay, and if I, if you give me leave for, so we know that there will be a shortage of, just because of the age of our current skilled labors, and it's not being, people are not entering those, those, those skilled trades, those ticketed trades, at the rate that they are, rate that they are retiring or leaving. So I guess whatever we can do to, to help facilitate that going forward, but typically, those people are going to drive to wherever it is that they, you know, and they're going to work in the region, or they're going to be, if they're called out of their immediate region, will be the builder, or whatever the employer's responsibility to, to house them. So how do we? Yeah. Any comments on how we, like, what really, I'm just trying to figure out what really is our place in this, or is this a free market situation?
In terms of temporary housing?
No, in, just in, in trying to facilitate more skilled workers to even, you know, to be here.
So through the chair?
Yeah.
I think there are some things in the report that I didn't go over, in terms of bringing in skilled trades trucks, working more closely with Loyalist. I think the, the view from a lot of skilled trades operators is that, you know, not having it in high school created a real blip, that people need to be introduced to it in a much younger age. And I agree with you that that isn't necessarily a municipality's responsibility to sort of run summer camps, or whatever else. But I do think we're creating great partnerships, where we can be at the table, where we can be encouraging, you know, people to come in and, and do those things, and, and I think it really is just about creating that sense of, this is a career that is open to you. I think a lot of, when we were doing these surveys, when people were telling me how much some of their staff were being paid, I really wondered what I was doing in my current situation, because some of these shops are very, very lucrative, and I think that is something that sometimes can be lost, you know, when we, when we think about skilled trades, and, and where you can start out versus where you can get to. I think the other thing that came through when we were talking about apprenticeships was, you can graduate from high school and start earning immediately, you get paid, you're not like, you know, waiting to get your education, and then you can finally get a paycheck. So I think it is, you know, talking about this, making it easier, having these programs in Loyalist, where you don't have to leave, you know, not having to do block release, where you, you leave and you go on EI, and you have to spend time out of the community. Those aren't, again, are not necessarily things that a municipality can do, but I think it helps that we sort of know what's happening, and can work with our partners on, you know, improving things, sorry.
Madam CEO?
Through the chair to council, I would also point out that this report does an excellent job of explaining where there are community partners that are taking actions, as Karen's outlined on the training example, but it is the four motions on this agenda where we're suggesting there be municipal action, and training is not one of them.
Thank you. Councillor Brandhorst, and then McNaughton and Engels Dorfer.
I have a couple of questions, so I'll see how many the chair lets me buy with, but me keep saying follow-up.
Try.
I guess my first question does go with the, I would like to know a little bit more specifics, before I can agree to the idea of more temporary worker land, or more temporary housing for the workers. Specifically, what is, I keep saying this today, but what's the wish? Like, what, what do you want by this? Is it the idea that you're going to open up zoning, put on, that they can bring in trailers for their workers to live in those spots? Or is it specifically that we're, that they can build homes? Is it a municipal ask? Do they, like, do they need land? Like, what is the want specifically? Will be my first.
Through the chair, part of the reason why I phrased it as explore measures, as opposed to we're making a recommendation to go ahead with zoning changes, is because I think we need to answer questions like what you're asking. We had, you know, we don't have extensive, we haven't talked to every developer in the community, we had several developers say to us, this would really help us out. In brief conversations with development services, they have some reservations about what would happen here. I think the wish is, I sort of see economic development as trying to create conditions for success. So what can we do to make things that we think will benefit our community happen a little easier, maybe less costly? So when I think about, you know, these are the houses that we need, you know, to grow the economy, to grow the tax base, to do all of this stuff, how can we make it easier to have this happen? We may find out through this, this exploration, that actually having temporary housing may be a, removing a barrier. That's my wish.
Follow-up?
Specifically to that one? I guess part of, like, I'm not opposed to it, but some of my thought is, one, is this only going to be something open to developers? Or is this going to be a little bit farther asked of what is a skilled trade? Can it be an agricultural-based skilled trade, like a hoof trimmer? Like, we have one hoof trimmer that travels right across Ontario, and he does, well, we have two that travel through. Will they have permits to stay at agricultural properties? Like, I guess there's like a bit of a ripple effect? Or is this only supporting larger housing developers, that, no offense to them, have a lot of money that can, can kind of deal with it? Is the temporary housing specific, like, is there going to be programs then that encourage more temporary housing for, say, young people that might not be able to afford a house in this market, but could be housed as an individual that lives, that would want to live here, that is a skilled trade worker, that is now living underneath a developer's dime, to build on their property, which then encourages growth and family development within Prince Edward County? Or is it specifically that we're encouraging people that live outside of the area that will not create more roots and more job displaced? Like, will we create jobs displacement from having skilled trade workers from the GTA coming here, taking away from building jobs and plumbing jobs and other skilled workers that are here? Like, that's my worry, that it does open it up to be easier for them. I'm not disagreeing, but is it going to hurt some of our community members as a ripple effect to that? That would be my largest fear with it, but I do see some benefits that maybe we could get some temporary housing for people to save up some money along the way, so.
So through the chair, I think these are the very questions that we would look at as we explored this. I mean, I've put here that this would only be for active housing developments, and I think my understanding from speaking to developers is that if you are someone who builds homes in large numbers, you actually work in a different way than someone who does custom work, or who does custom building on homes, that it is a bit more, you come in, you do the job, it's the same thing in every bathroom, it's the same thing on every staircase. So it's a little bit of a different skill set. But I think these are all issues that if we saw this as a, you know, staff, we would like you to spend some time thinking about this, that we would think about, we would explore.
Sure. And then we're going, then we're going to councillor McNaughton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, and then I guess, would that specific ask of looking into the temporary housing fall underneath the funds for the 2025 ask of what would be the $100,000? Or is that a separate ask, that would just be our staff's time, and not specifically to the additional ask of a consultant?
So through the chair, yeah, I wasn't intending to have any budget impact in doing that.
Councillor McNaughton?
Thank you, thank you for those excellent questions, councillor Brandhorst, and they were similar to the direction I want to go. You've covered off some space, and leaves me, I can sort of maybe move along the same lines, the same theme, and, and also address one of your questions, was there already is currently provisions in the zoning bylaw to permit certain types of temporary housing, which I believe which I believe would work with what is proposed in clause five. However, I, what I'm trying to understand is, does clause five, the wording of that clause specifically looks, it says, at active housing development sites? That's the intention? At, like, literally on housing development sites? This is the intention that would be explored? Is that how I understand it, just strictly that?
So through the chair, yes.
Okay.
But I don't know what you're thinking of that might also be included. So what I'm picturing is where you have a development, where you need folks to come in and work on it, that this temporary housing would be placed right on that work site. So it would need to be a certain level of servicing before you could even place temporary housing there.
Okay. So for example, the report that would be anticipated to come back would cover the rights of bylaw to be able to go and inspect that housing to ensure that it was safe and humane, just as one example?
Through the chair, so not being a building inspector, I don't want to overcommit what they would do, but my understanding is that depending on what kind of temporary housing you're have, you're getting, they're usually considered a building structure, so they would need to fill, file, follow the building code.
Okay. So I, I have concerns about this too. I'm willing to see what the report looks at, but if one of the challenges with housing that's tied to occupation is that there can, that there is some risks for occupants, I also want to echo Counselor Branderhorst's, Branderhorst's, I can't speak apparently today. Is to ensure that this doesn't become any, that doesn't present any risk to offset local talent. I want to compliment you on this great report. It was really interesting and it really takes me back to last June, a meeting I wasn't at, where we talked about the business survey for the community. And, and this addresses sort of one of the, one of those gaps so beautifully and works well with that report to sort of, to look at the, the field and to talk about what great opportunities are, are in this area and how, and, and how it is such a vibrant area. I don't have concerns that even if there's a slowdown in new construction, that we also have a significant gap in people who can go and do repairs in people's homes, and it's one of the complaints I get regularly. And these skilled jobs and these small businesses, the opportunity is tremendous. And I think that is very clear in the survey responses. And the challenges are so well laid out, succession's a concern, getting enough staff, training, apprenticeships, like, having access to apprenticeships. It's, it's really exciting to see it encapsulated a little bit. And it does bring to mind some of the on-farm, farm diversified uses that I think Counselor Branderhorst was also referring to, and that Loyalist is embarking on with their green economies, in their green economies areas, where they're working on really diversifying on-farm stuff. So that, I think, is, it all marries well together to create a better picture. So I want to thank you for that work.
Counselor Engels Dorfer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking specifically at clause four in the motion and just the, the funds for future employment lands and commercial development requirements. I'm thinking specifically of Wellington. Aren't we a little behind the eight ball on that? Because we've already, we have a DC study that's telling us what's going to be paid for by commercial, so how will that not change? I mean, I just, I think we're kind of too late on that, aren't we?
So through the chair, I guess I think, is there a reason why we wouldn't correct being too late on something so that we can prevent this from happening in the future? And what I mean by that is, we are looking at developments where, at the current moment, when I look at main streets, there isn't enough room to open new businesses. And there are lots of places where the rent is quite high. It makes it very difficult for younger entrepreneurs or for new entrepreneurs to find space in our community. And I think when we have these building blocks in place, we can start to make a little more direction, I guess I would say. And I understand right now that the municipality does not have the ability to say to a developer, X percent of your development needs to go towards commercial. So having these things sort of built in allows people to sort of know what they're getting into when they look at a development in our area.
Mayor Ferguson. Counselor Pennell, you've already been in the first round, but Counselor Harrison, you have not, so you'll follow Mayor Ferguson.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks a lot, Karen and, and Mike for undertaking this. There's a lot to chew on in this report. Couple of, couple of things. The, it's a little disappointing, but the number of respondents. But I'm interested in what's contained in the, what is in the agenda page 108 to 112 concerning the advantages, disadvantages, what, what, you know, the recommendations, how we can improve, so on and so forth. I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, that the key comments contained in the body of the report have been distilled from these, these lists. Is that correct?
So through the chair, there is an appendix that came with it, attachment three, that has every response in it, for the purposes of the report. I did, yeah, pick things out.
Okay. All right. So of the, these, these lists, if you like, 108 to 112, really interesting, what, what is the plan to deal with these? Because they, they will, they do provide information about how we can improve, how we can, can, you know, assist economic development as we, as we move forward. Do you have any, can you provide any information about how these would be used?
Through the chair, can I just ask you to clarify? I only have my report in front of me, so I don't have a page 108.
Okay. What I'm referring to, and you may not be able to answer it now, is, is on, on page 108, it's what are the three advantages of doing business in Prince Edward County? What are the three disadvantages of doing business in Prince Edward County? What are the top three challenges your business is currently facing? And what's this one? In terms of overall impact on the community, whose place to do business, was the one significant change you would like to see in the next five years? Those are the pages I'm, I'm referring to, because they're interesting recommendations, suggestions, complaints, and it's a real mixed bag. But there's a lot we can learn from this that may, may inform how we, how we can improve the environment for, for economic development and certainly for developers, skilled trades, and everybody else. I'm just wondering how you see that being, these, this information being utilized.
So through the chair, I think the recommendations that involve the municipality are here. You know, I'm hoping that by taking a look at some of our processes that involve our own municipal services and embedding economic development in those, we might be able to make some improvements for people's perceptions of, of when they come to the municipality with ideas or with plans, how that process might go. I think in terms of, you know, being able to expand, being able to be connected to land that's available, the intention is to kind of get a sense of what's out there, how it's being utilized, how we can start making those connections. And I think, you know, there are some things here that our partners will probably be working on a little more steadily. The Learning Center and its Inspired Program, the Community Benefits Agreement that there, Thrive and, and the Learning Center are working on, might help figure out a pipeline for workforce and training needs and, and maybe start matching employers with those employment, or training needs.
Okay. It, it's just really interesting information. Some of it is really encouraging. It, but thanks for, it's a great report and, and there's a lot to digest, so, thank you.
Counselor Harrison, you're up next.
Yes, I just kind of have a brief comment or a bit of an input, so to speak, on that number five. The biggest demand I hear of out there for temporary housing is definitely in the hospitality business. And every year I hear it from multiple proprietors of businesses, the restaurant business, other hospitality businesses. And I think any initiative in that direction would certainly be appreciated by that sector as well. I know in the construction end, part of it anyway, with things slowing down elsewhere, the phone is ringing with people that have been laid off, that are looking for jobs here. But that same sort of thing doesn't seem to happen in the, in the hospitality industry. So it's just a comment.
Anyone else for round one before I start? No? Okay. So Counselor Pennell, followed by Counselor Branderhorst, and then Counselor Nyman.
I'm going back once again to, with development going on, allowing housing there. My only question is, some of these projects we're looking at right now could be 35, 40 years before they're done. Does that mean that I, as a developer, can put up, well, say I, the faster I can build houses, the faster I can sell them, if the time is there and the money is there? But does that mean I could build up because I brought in 130 crew, that I could build a building, hold 130 people, all of a sudden the work's locked up? Automatically, if that developer come to council and the way the housing situation is not only in this county, but every surrounding county, they say, well, we're just going to start renting it out otherwise. And then if our houses start again, we'll go back to the others. And I ask the question, how can we encourage, other than the Queenie area, for people to put up buildings that's taking advantage of the people that are trying to buy the buildings because it puts their costs up too? And I believe it's important, we want development, but the taxpayers of this county should not be paying for it. And they could be if we get into the scenario where, oh, I need this building. We're going to say, yeah, you need it for the help. All of a sudden, if anything slows down, well, I think it's a planning issue. I do not believe it is an issue for this. And that's where I believe it should be dealt with. And maybe if we get those houses up, we might be able to put some restrictions on through planning that they do become places where seasonal workers or restaurateurs, people and that could use them, but not just cart plane jurors.
Counselor Branderhorst, and then Counselor Nyman.
I would like, since I think we've talked enough about point five, even though I have more questions on it, I'd like to just ask about point three, or recommendation three, that specifically, what was the intention and/or the direction that your team was initially thinking of the inventory of existing vacant land or underutilized public or privates? Can you expand more? And where specifically are you looking at? And what type of lands are ideal in those categories?
So through the chair, basically this is a precursor and maybe trying to take a little bit of what might happen under the employment lands, is we can sort of assess what we already have right now to try and solve problems sort of in a faster timeline than, than doing a rezoning might take. So right now what I'm looking at is anything zoned for industry, manufacturing, and I'm also looking at highway, at local and general commercial, and sort of seeing what's vacant, what's underutilized, what's being used for something other than the purpose it was zoned for. I think that's just a first step. Then what do we do with that list after that? My immediate thing is to start connecting people with opportunities. So where something is underutilized, if an owner sort of says, yeah, I'd consider a tenant, or I'd consider a workshop, great, then I can start making those connections and we can start getting people maybe faster along in their, their vision for their business. Beyond that, we'll see what happens.
A direct follow-up to that?
Sorry, I'm just asking too many questions. I guess my question to that is, isn't all, or I would like clarification, currently all industrial and manufacturing lands are either in Picton, Wellington, and I think some in Bloomfield, correct?
So through the chair, from what I can see on our GIS planner, it is mostly Picton. Yeah. We have one lot that's in Cherry Valley that is zoned for industry. I want to say we have one in Black River, too. Sorry, I'm, yeah. But for the most part, industry is in the urban areas.
Just a comment on that.
Okay. And then we're going to Counselor Nyman.
I guess my comment to that is specifically, we're looking at skilled trades. I know there's tons of individuals with skilled trades, in my ward specifically, which is a rural ward, it's Athel. So we're in not a heavily dense area. However, there's also a lot of land in my ward that is not great for housing and other developments and/or sometimes agricultural, where quite land or quite limestoney. But I guess what I would be interested in, in looking at is how are we now currently supporting and looking forward at supporting business owners who are on rural lands that want to either, if they need to build a shop for storing different equipment that can better further their lands, how are we supporting them on maybe these large parcels that already can't grow things for agricultural purposes, but can spread out the development so it doesn't always have to be all in the main sector areas? Which then also increases, you know, workers living in other wards. It creates a larger spread out across municipality instead of just having these really dense areas. So that would be something I would be interested in and really hope that staff look into in section three, is in the underutilized private lands, is looking into how can we better support our rural business individuals that are already doing what we want, but just allowing a little bit more flexibility to them and how we can support their journey and their employment for what they're already doing.
Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on that point, and I just want to say that the whole, the way I see it, number three is, right now, we don't know what land we have and what land is underutilized. And to me, this is a big step in, in that. You're finding that out so that you can facilitate some of those discussions. So that's, to me, is a big part. It is. But when the time comes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have number five voted on separate. Thank you.
Counselor Maynard, you wanted to get in there?
Thank you. And, yeah, again, on, on number, on number three, I think especially in our, in our vast rural areas, like here, it's talking about just looking at those lands that are zoned industrial, manufacturing, or for employment uses. I think that we should also be looking at our, at our residentially zoned parcels, because, as you say, many of these businesses really are on the, on the road. And if they have a large rural residential property and they want to put up a, you know, a good-sized garage that will be good for some storage and maybe a really modest amount of fabrication, but they're really not customer-facing, right? Because these got, you know, they're out on the road doing their, their business. That maybe there's at least some, some consideration, because I know, you know, I've talked to some that said, like, you know, I, I just need a big garage, right? But I can't do it because it's not, it's not, like, they're really not home-based businesses, they're not, you know, as They're not, you know, so as we look at that, those zoning restrictions, and maybe they exist.
Madam CAO?
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard, and it kind of also goes to Counselor Branderhorst's question. I just want to clarify that number three here is about the buildings that we already have that, you know, it might be a business that no longer operates, and, but people don't always know that that site exists, or, and as Karen points out, we could play a better role in connecting them and promoting that there is industrial land. It's, it just might not be top of mind because it's not in that centralized business park in Picton that people are thinking is the only place we have. So an old cannery or an old factory that's sitting fallow or, you know, used well below what it could be, connect the right people, we could be sparking some really interesting new business or expansion of business. So that's all number three is about. But the very real question about whether or not you are in a rural area, if you're in an agriculturally zoned area, there's lots of flexibility in zoning to do ag-related activities. But if you're in a rural area, there isn't that same flexibility. And I would direct people interested in this one to the comprehensive zoning bylaw changes that we are contemplating and that there's been some consultation. I don't know how much that particular issue has come out in that consultation, but it's not over. So the first iteration of what that, results of that consultation is due to come back out late summer, early fall, and this will come before Council on Planning and Development Committee, which is council. So there's more time to have that conversation. So I would say definitely, for those who are interested in that issue, look to see whether or not adequate flexibility is built into the proposed changes. And if not, let's look to where that could address those changes.
Just as a quick follow-up.
Yep.
So yes, Madam CAO, I recognize, right, that that's where it's housed, but how do we, because I knew that the timeline was pretty short and whether there will be, because most of that, those allowances are for home, you know, for small home-based businesses and not necessarily for small trades-based, you know, businesses.
So through the chair to Counselor Maynard, I mean, I personally think that we take the time we need to get the comprehensive zoning bylaw right. It'll be the first time we do a bylaw like this since amalgamation. There is no point rushing it across the finish line if it doesn't meet the needs of this community and where our future is. So, and I also want to commend our planning and economic staff who, while they rarely agree, work very closely together because the solution is in the combined professional expertise of both those interests. So if we don't have it right yet, then it will slow down. It needs to, it needs to get right. And so, but that's the place where that change could occur.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody else jumping in. You have one more thing, and then I get to say something? Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to be sure we all understand what paragraph five is about. It uses the verb explore. It's just asking staff to explore measures, not to dictate anything, just to come up with a report. And that's measures to allow temporary housing, not to provide temporary housing. It's just saying, is there a way that we could allow it? And that probably would be like zoning changes, something like that. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Sure, Counselor Branderhorst. No, no, you go ahead. Chair gets the last word, so I'm going to hold to that.
Okay, perfect. I just want to specifically say that I don't know, I do appreciate what Counselor Hirsch said with explore measures to allow temporary housing. Where I trip up on this is kind of what Counselor Harrison brought up, which is, as much as I support our skilled workers and the needing of more, I also appreciate what Counselor Hirsch said, even though I know that kind of takes us out of skilled trade and construction business retention report specifically, but I almost want to see that issue expanded on more, even if that is into our zoning bylaw more for temporary housing for workers, if that is hospitality, if that is construction workers, if that is. And what is that output? So at this point, I would like to see that report, even though it's a small one, made into a bigger one. I don't think it, being a small report, is enough. I think it needs to be bigger, so I don't know if it gets dragged now or put into a separate one. I don't know if it needs a new motion. I'm not 100% sure. So I'm just going to sit on that.
Okay, I get, you've heard Counselor Branderhorst's comments. Okay, so for myself, I will tell everyone, I was a participant in this. As everybody knows, I am in the construction trades. And I was asked to participate. I was one of the 22 that were interviewed. I was rather disappointed that it was only 22 of us in a field that doesn't just encompass developers. It included everybody that, top to bottom housing. Some of us were independent operators, some having our own companies with multiple employees. So while it was a small group, I think it was a good cross-section. I was disappointed that it wasn't 50 respondents. But to add clarity to why that didn't happen, everybody's so darn busy, and I will tell you that. Right now, there is, regardless of what some are saying out there, there is an extreme shortage of skilled labor everywhere, not just Prince Edward County, and it's not going to change overnight. Some of these recommendations for me make sense because we need to foster and encourage an environment that builds on the things that we do well, but also to fill in the gaps where we are lacking. And it is our responsibility as a municipality to encourage and build an environment that helps business to grow. That's what business retention and expansion is all about. This one is specific for the, we'll call it the construction trades, building trades, whatever you're going to call it. And I'm glad it was separate because it is, if I'm not mistaken, the third largest employer in Prince Edward County, construction trades. And it is one of the ones that pays the best. We all know that tourism and, yeah, Karen, I'll try to hook you up with a different job if things don't work out here. You know, it's, and it, so many things have been said that were great. Karen, thank you very much for mentioning about how people, there is no immediate requirement when you leave high school here in Canada and that prohibits you from jumping into a trade that pays really good. I can tell you right now, you will not find a floor sweeper for less than $18 an hour. That's good money. Karen mentioned a few of the statistics about the possible wage earnings, and they're spot-on, I have to tell you. In my business, if I need to hire somebody to come and, I'll say, drywalling crew, you're talking upwards of $30 bucks an hour per person. So I just, I want to make that clear so that I see this as encouraging and building and assisting and creating a welcoming environment, a growing environment where there's already this massive need. So thank you very much for that, Karen. So with regards to identifying a possible inventory of lands, Counselor Nyman, you're right, we absolutely need to know what we have, what's available. And then our Economic Development Department can, and other departments can start promoting what we have. But we just don't know what we don't, we don't know what we don't know at this point. So absolutely, we need to move forward with that. With regards to including funds in the draft budget, we do that all the time with just about everything we do here. We won't know what we need unless staff bring it to us at budget time and tell us, this is what we're suggesting and we, this is what we suggest it may cost. That's when we have that greater discussion. I perfectly, am perfectly comfortable knowing that that's coming to us for that greater in-depth discussion. And with regards to the allowing temporary housing, Counselor Harrison is well familiar with temporary housing for offshore workers. That is a, was very much a commonplace thing growing up here in the agricultural sector. I don't see it as any different. We're not talking about building apartment buildings for temporary workers. What I envision is that somebody is building, moving forward at a very good clip on a development site or whatever, and having the ability to place temporary worker housing that meets all of the housing standards as offshore worker standards were. You have to provide good housing, good, safe, clean housing for people. I see this as a way to explore, how can we do this? So, all in all, I believe all, you know, the entire report, thank you very much, Karen, I think it was really, really well done. The effort that was put into it, Mr. Farrell put in a great effort to do all the interviews. It was a struggle to get any developer to take a couple hours off in the middle of the day. I was fortunate, I was able to do it. I had a meeting here in the afternoon, so. And I did my best to reach out to a lot of my contacts, but the comment I kept getting was, oh, I can't take the middle of the day off. Maybe in the, maybe it would be helpful to attempt a second round, but try to do it in evenings, I don't know, because I think there's more we can learn.
Simplify.
Hmm?
Simplify it.
And, yeah, maybe simple, but anyways, I see, this is a great start. I support all of it, and I think we just need to move forward, just like we did with all the other business retention and expansion study that we did. So, anyways, that's all I have to say on the matter. But I do have a suggestion from Counselor Nyman to separate number five from the first four motions.
If we could, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Chair, I will recognize separating that. Counselor Branderhorst, you have a question?
I'd like to make an amendment to number five.
Okay, when we put it on the floor, I'll look to you to make an amendment. So are there any further questions or comments from members of council with regards to, we'll save one through four because it's clear we're going to have a separate motion for number five? No? Okay, Madam Clerk? So I need a mover and seconder?
No.
Okay, we need to make an amendment then, yes. Okay. So we are severing number five for a separate vote, as per your request?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is with regards to points one through four then? Okay, I'll call that motion. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, so number five, and I'm going to use the same to mover, mover and seconder, if they're still willing. Okay? And that is to vote on it separately, but I also have suggested, suggestion of an amendment. Counselor Branderhorst, go ahead.
Yes, so my suggestion, suggested amendment is that council direct staff to explore measures to encourage temporary housing for workers and return to council in early 2025 with recommendations. So it's just making it a little bit more broad. I'm not opposed to it going on construction sites or anything that you said in your comment. Counselor Sejina, it's just more specifically, a little wider, because I think other, as though this is specific to the trades, I think it might encourage other businesses to.
Can I suggest and others? Because this, I believe the intent here was it specific to, but if you wish to add more to it, I would suggest adding to it as opposed to deleting the construction part? Do you follow me?
Yeah.
Add that you wish to add, but don't delete from this, I think would be my suggestion. Might be easier.
Yeah, okay, so you're saying that, so during, so the, going back to the original one, that is, that council directs staff to explore measures to allow temporary housing for skilled trades and construction workers at active housing, development sites, and other locations? So just adding and other locations and return to council and/or other?
I think it would have to be in other worker housing, like you want to, it's not other locations than development sites. It's modifying.
Other permanent lands?
Well, I think Counselor Branderhorst is talking about different sectors. So if you just put and other sites, you're modifying the line about development at active housing sites, so.
It could be misconstrued as applying to just about any piece of land in the county.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, so you want it to be specific, all right. Capturing that, Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, so to clarify, are we reverting back to Counselor Branderhorst's original one, that council directs staff to explore measures to encourage temporary housing for workers and return to council in 2025 with?
I'm going to just pull my motion, mostly because of the fact that I did ask a quick point of clarification to Madam CAO, which there is already the, which was an idea that there is already the hospitality one we passed previously, and there is already one on farms. So you know what, I'm just going to pull it and leave it the way it is. Why muck around with it? So.
Okay, so there shall be no amendment?
Yeah, you want to know.
Okay, so Counselor Nyman, because you pulled that, do you, did you have some comments that you wish to make on it, or?
No, I just want to vote around it separate.
Votes as a separate motion, okay. Counselor Maynard, you had, you're good? Okay, so I heard.
Amendment? Yeah. It was on her.
Okay. Counselor Grasso?
Just one question. The housing, like the foreign workers that live on some of the farms, they have to get inspected by the Labor Board, do not?
Through the chair, I believe they have to be inspected by public health. I don't know whether someone from Labor also comes?
Public health and, but I'm also depending on certain. It's public health specifically within the county, but then depending on which organizations or, like, so say if you use a temporary foreign worker agency, then some of those agencies will also do specific checks. There's a couple different systems that you go through depending on what you're going through. But yes, public health does a, or is supposed to do a yearly check on, and fire and safety.
I believe there's.
These would not fall under the same scope as that?
Yeah, through the chair, I would need to sort of do some research on that, but at this point, no, the temporary foreign workers program has public health.
It's two different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question for public health and Ministry of Labor and Department of Immigration and all those wonderful government agencies that oversee any kind of worker housing.
For clarification only?
Sure.
So that's the sort of stuff that would get caught up in the explore, right? All the requirements for company housing?
Through the chair, you've definitely given me a lot of things to add in this report, should it go forward.
If not, then not, but I'm just wondering if that would be, like, you know, everything that, okay, thank you.
Yes, I suspect that one is going to be a rather extensive report as well.
How many ministries?
Yeah. Okay, so does anyone else have any further questions on number five? Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, that carries. All right, and I am going to call a recess before we jump into the next long discussion that we know is coming. 10 minutes, we'll return at 3:18. And I need to go to my bathroom really bad.
Although I can actually see it's very sensitive. Yeah, it just flooded. That would be my house.
So can we show pictures right now with all these projects?
Oh, I know.
Great photography.
Oh, it is.
So how is it?
Um, I think so. I.
I'm watching. I'm watching. I got it straight from Foster. I need Foster. I need Foster. You have.
You know, to look after this, getting more skilled trades workers and stuff, because Counselor Sejina isn't getting any.
Well, I stay away. I will let you guess which comment of those is mine. I know exactly which one it is.
Another, I know that it's you.
With regards to, no one to follow me was my comment, and I heard that from so many in my age bracket that are going, I want to retire in five years or seven years, and there's nobody behind me. And that's why I'm happy to see Loyalist College, I want to see that move forward.
He seems like a really good guy. You see, you see new this Kirkpatrick?
I think he's recently appointed. I forget what, Steve would know who the former CEO was, but. How long has Mark Kirkpatrick been the CEO of Loyalist?
A year?
Well, yeah, he was just, I forget, what was her name? That's right, yes.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, so we are now at 6.2. Okay, could you tap on the window out there, or somebody?
Yeah, people back.
The coffee clutch needs to come back in. That's the fun part of being the chair, you can actually do that. Yeah, don't hit. Yeah.
Well, look, you can even see them.
Oh, okay.
They're not dents, but I think it just, that tells you when that was last dusted.
Yeah, that's just dust.
You can see the spots where it's been.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. If everyone could please take their seats. So, Madam Clerk, we are now at item, agenda item 6.2, Report of the Corporate Legislative Services Department, dated July 25, 2024, regarding the non-core asset management plan, and we have Director Nickel here with us. And once again, this is a rather extensive report. Looks like a lot of effort went into it, so I'm just going to turn it over to you, sir, to maybe flesh it out a little bit more for us. Go ahead, Erin.
Through the chair to members of council. I guess the first thing I have to do is say there's been a lot of staff in a lot of departments doing a lot of extra work over the last two and a half years on asset management, so I'd like to thank them for that, because it's above and beyond what they traditionally do, so thanks to them. This is a, reports on the asset management plan for non-core assets that ranges from facilities, the fleet, the equipment, the parks and recreation, and then road-related assets. So this not only meets compliance with Ontario Regulation 58017, but also provides a foundation for asset management moving forward. In July 1 of 2022, we passed the core asset management plan, which was water, wastewater, bridges, and roads. The next phase was to pass the non-core asset management plan, excuse me, and then those two will be consolidated into a combined asset management plan for July 1 of 2025. So basically, what we've done here is provided all the information necessary, although there is some gaps that we will fill over the next year to create the consolidated asset management plan. One thing to note in this non-core asset management plan is traditionally you'd see a financial strategy. There's lots of numbers in this plan, but there's no strategy in terms of how we're going to eliminate that infrastructure deficit. That will come in the next phase over the next year, and you'll also notice that there are levels of service in here, but they're not detailed technical levels of service or community-based levels of service, or they're subsets. That also will be determined over the next year-long process, and council will have to be involved in that, and we do plan in the next step section, council working with staff at workshops in the first quarter of next year in order to set the service levels, and then develop the financial strategy in order to meet our targets. So that's really where the rubber hits the road, is will be over the next year, and again, it'll be very time-consuming, and it'll be well with the fruits of our labor. Now, in terms of this report and this non-core asset management plan, it's made up of three primary sections. One is the state of the infrastructure, which is basically just an inventory of our assets. It identifies replacement cost, and in most cases, condition, and some other items. Then we have levels of service. So there are legislative levels of service that we are keeping track of, but again, we're going to work on that, because funding is directly tied to the levels of service that we provide. And then the last section is the lifecycle management section, and that basically is what we have to do, excuse me, with our assets to maintain our current levels of service. So those are the three sections, and I guess maybe some of the highlights in the actual asset management plan, I don't think is any surprise, is facilities are in poor condition, and I think Director Lisa Lindsay has had a couple of reports come to council on that. Overall, fleet is in good condition, however, there are 20 fleet vehicles that are in poor to very poor condition. They range from operations to, I think there's one cargo van for RCF, and then fire fleet as well. So those are past their useful life, and then there's also parks and rec and a couple gaps in parks and recreation and equipment that we've got to eliminate over the next year and boost our inventory count related to those different areas, so. And with that, I'll just, I guess, be available for questions.
Okay, so we need to get this motion on the floor? So could I have a mover and seconder to move the recommendations, please? Counselor McNaughton, Counselor Harrison?
Thank you very much. This is the McNaughton-Harrison motion that council received, report CLS 172024 for information. The council directs staff to use the non-core asset management plan and the core asset management plan to inform the 2025 capital budget, and that council directs staff to return with a discussion in Q1 2025 to. return with a discussion in Q1 2025 to confirm service standards for all assets in order to establish a long-term funding strategy for a consolidated asset management plan to meet the provincial regulatory deadline of July 2025.
Okay. Now, I'll give you, as mover, I'll give you the first option to, to ask questions or make a comment.
Thank you very much. I don't actually need it. I think it speaks for itself. I actually also have to cop to the fact that I haven't finished reading the actual Watson report and related it back to the, the linear asset management report and have to do that before I can have a better overview, but I'm very happy to see this step taken, and I understand our obligations to the province, and I also understand it that what we're looking at is quite daunting and the, and very complex. So I'm looking forward to these next steps, and I'm also hoping at some point before we get to the workshop phase that is outlined in the next steps, that we'll be looking, that we'll have some opportunity to understand more about what was received in the facilities, the facilities assessments, because we're going to need some more detailed information to make some of the bigger decisions to come. Thanks.
Madam CEO.
Thank you, Chair, and to council and building on what Director McNichol has said, where we are in this process is that we are quantifying and putting details around our current state of assets based on all the decisions you've made to date in all the reports that have ever come forward on any of these asset classes. It doesn't mean we're frozen in time. It's just trying to say, based on where we are right now, this is what the picture looks like. We do plan on bringing a building report. We are still awaiting some additional information from the Roth Iams Consulting Firm that you heard from earlier in the spring, and then there will be a, a much anticipated report on buildings responding to Counsel Brany's original recommend, motion that was passed earlier this, late last year, and, and that is another important piece. Keep in mind, that was still only a portion of our buildings. We still own a lot more property and buildings than even that report looks at, but the workshop phase in next year is really where council will make some decisions about the relative, when you see it all together and how much everything costs and whether, you know, this is a hundred-year plan or a 30-year plan, how do we move forward? And, and that's where I think it will become more obvious for council and informed by the budget consultations we're having with the public now, you know, maybe that's too rich in a particular asset class, and you want to take some of those things out, push them down into later years, well, then we're going to have to change the service standards in that category in order to do so. So I think it will help council make the decisions. Right now, we've had very siloed conversations about what you want and what this community expects in any tip, in any single category, and next is trying to integrate that and, and look at the financial implications writ large. So, so that's kind of where we head next, and that is why we are recommending in this motion that we use these reports to inform the capital budget and just, we'll, we'll talk about this more in our report coming in August, but what we're thinking is that we would just do a one-year capital plan and a multi-year operating plan, because really, until we've done this large exercise, it's not fair to identify multi-year priorities based on the current state when you haven't seen how everything integrates and haven't been able to provide direction on that. So we really would just be taking these plans to identify the most urgent things and, and use that to inform the 25 capital budget. Quick follow-up?
Sure. And then I.
Thank you. To, along those lines, do you see further consultation happening based on the outcome of those service level conversations and any proposed changes? Is that sort of, that, that would be the picture I have in my head? I'm wondering if that's sort of what's anticipated.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think, I think we need to get a bit of structure and direction around that conversation, so I see some workshop time with council first to then put something out into the public, but, but yeah, I think it's going to take us six months before we can get to a place that we can provide a plan to the ministry, but we all have to buy into that plan, council and community alike, because it will affect the capital budgets. It will make capital budgeting much easier in the future, because it will all be already decided, but, and you would check in, like, has something changed that is, makes me rethink our whole asset management plan because of some externality or some change in our thinking, but generally, your capital plan becomes a, a status update as opposed to every year having a big conversation about where we should spend our money. So it does make it a lot easier, but, but it needs a lot of upfront buy-in to, to be able to get to that place. So definitely public consultation, but probably some workshopping, and then some consultation, and then some more workshopping.
Okay, thank you very much for that context that I like the vision that it becomes a very predictable plan.
Thank you, Counselor Nyman, Counselor Hirsch, and then Counselor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to maybe understand a bit more. So the services that we're providing is captured in this too, or no?
In this, through the Chair to Counselor Nyman, in this report, there are some service levels set. So we've set the service level. Next step is to set the target and then keep track of that towards our target. So there are certain service levels that were set during the core asset management plan, and there are certain service levels set in this non-core asset management plan, and then the plan is to build upon that and come up with new community and technical levels of services and targets that council agrees to, and that will be directly tied to the amount of money. And an example would be, right now, we're utilizing 80 as a PCI for our modeling, which we're also doing in parallel, a bigger phrase? Oh, Payment Condition Index, and sorry about that, in the actual modeling that we're doing to determine whether or not, how long it takes and what funding we need in order to reach a PCI of 80. Well, maybe council will say, well, maybe we're okay with a PCI of 70, depending on ride comfort ratings. Well, that drastically changes the amount of money that we'll be funding per year moving forward, and that changes the whole timeline. So that's sort of an example of how important it is to set these service levels, so because they're directly tied to the actual budget and the actual funding to meet them. So there are some in here to answer a question, Counselor Nyman, and some in the core, and those are legislated.
Thanks for your explanation. And so, and why I ask that question is because we've noticed, or we've seen that tax hikes go up every year, and so, and my way of thinking, we need to figure out what service level we need, because, and what services are we providing that we don't have to provide so that we don't have to keep raising the taxes at the rate we're raising? So that's kind of, and it sounds like we're going to get to that, or no? Through these, or do, when do we have those opportunities to have those discussions?
Through the Chair to Counselor Nyman, the, the start of those discussions will be in the first quarter of 2025, and they will be directly tied to the services and the service levels that we provide. I, right now, I have about 10 or 15 different examples of service levels on technical and the community side as a starting point, where we can work with all of staff and all of council at the initial workshop to come up with service levels, and again, that's tied directly to the, to the, the financial strategy that we'll, that we'll have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're going to have those discussions in 2025, so basically, we're tied to where we are for the, the budget, upcoming budget, I guess, is what I'm trying to.
Through the Chair to Counselor Nyman, so what we're doing this fall is filling in the missing pieces of information in these asset management plans, as the directors pointed out, but also doing the work to start to cost out. If you left everything the same, how much would it cost? Because you need to see the financial impact to be able to, because some asset classes are very cheap to deliver. So IT compared to roads, very different impact on the budget. So you need to see what it all looks like financially to then be able to say, I value this, but maybe not at that price, and so how do we move service standards to get to the things that you value the most getting dealt with the quickest? So, so we're doing that financial integration, and that's what's happening this fall so that we can bring something to have that conversation starter in 25, in, in the first quarter. For the budget this year, what we will be looking at is the condition assessment from all these asset classes and going with what is in the most need of action in the very shortest term, and try to go with a minimalist budget this year that would, from a capital perspective, tackle only what really needs to be done so that we are not predetermining or tying your hands on the outcome. And, and that is how we're handling the tax budget. On the water wastewater side, we're looking at all the studies that have been done, and there'll be another report coming back to council in September that will talk about financing and how all these pieces fit together and what the strategy is, so council has a better idea before we come to budget and can provide some direction. But, but on the tax side, the idea is that budget is really based on the must-dos in the, in each of the categories until we can get a integrated asset management plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hirsch, then Counselor Maynard, and then Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Erin, this, this is another great piece of work, which is, is now adding to a gigantic body of work for this whole asset management process, and it's, it's so critical. I'm not sure that the province had any idea what they were getting municipalities into when they said, you're all going to get this all done by 2025. It's, it's huge work, which enriches people like Andrew, the consultants, Watsons, but it is critical. I mean, we, we, perhaps if we hadn't been pushed by the province, maybe we wouldn't be looking at this property, but we are. And so paragraph three of the motion, as has already been discussed, that's the critical one, because we ultimately have to decide what are the service standards for all aspects of asset management that determines our financial plan, and therefore what ultimately ends up having to, to taxes. So this is one more of multiple steps, and I really look forward to, to, to those discussions so that we can have a, a very good and, and well-informed look at our, our service standards next year. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Maynard, and then Counselor Pennell.
Thank you. Well, these reports are always very sobering, and because the, the challenges are, are huge and perhaps beyond our, our capabilities, but when we talk about the, the current consultations and this whole level of service that we're going out for, you know, now, and I've attended now quite a few, and I, I think that such as it was in the construction industry for that survey, right, I, I'm not sure that we, really that that will be enough information to, to base this on, right, that whether we're just getting, you know, some of the vocal minority, because those, the ones that I have attended have been not, not very good, and I know that we're getting some online stuff, and I just worry that how we are going to prioritize. That's just a, a comment on, on how much, how much we put into those as we go forward. But when we talk about this year, and probably into next year, trying to have our service level priorities, so now we've got core, and we've got some information on non-core. I guess this is a question to the CAO. So how do we then prioritize between core and, and non-core, right? Like, I don't think we're, I don't think we're meeting the targets yet, and it's because of budgetary constraints of even looking after our core priorities, let alone some of our non-core priorities. And I guess the question is, like, do they have equal weighting, or because we're so far, and it's, I, I feel for this staff and this council, because the, the deficit has been long coming, and now we are faced with the unfortunate task of having to try and make some headway.
Through the Chair to Counselor Maynard, I think when, since both plans won't be consolidated or integrated, I would say that council could perhaps budget priorities based on strategic items, and, and it was actually identified as a risk in the report, when you're faced with finite resources, which all municipalities are, it sort of comes down to whether or not, it could be a water main is maybe more important than playground equipment, or, or, so I think that's a decision to council based on the, your, the strategic outlook of, of council and, and the strategic plan.
Madam CEO.
Thank you. I'll just add to that. I mean, I think that's how you budget now. You, you are making decisions every year about what collectively you think are the most important things to put in the capital plan. What, what asset management will get us is a more stepped-back view across the longer term about what those priorities are, and to accept where service levels need to change in order to achieve the outcomes that everybody is looking to get. The, the core and non-core language comes directly from the legislation. So the government is telling us what your core obligations are as municipalities in, in separating those two, and so that gives you some direction around how you want to consider budgeting it. I just want to make a comment about the consultation. I, I want to commend staff and the effort they have made to try and be more engaging, transparent, and collaborative this year. It was a, a direction of council. It's in our strategic plan. We have staff standing in the sun, talking to people, getting yelled at, taking the brunt of a lot of frustration in this community, and willingly doing that, to honestly hear from people. And maybe it's not the perfect consultation, but it's more than we did last year, and I commend them for trying to do something more, and I, I really hope all of you will too. We have to get somewhere, and you don't get there overnight. You get there slowly, incrementally, by trying to get better, and I think if we want staff to be more engaging and consultative, we have to thank them when they try. In terms of the feedback we're getting, we are seeing a, a good cross-section and, and a fair number of feedback. You will get a full debrief on what we heard in that consultation. It closes, I think, around the 9th of August. The report on the pre-budget discussion that was coming to the August Committee of the Whole will include a full summary, and you'll get that in the same way that we saw this economic development survey in the context of the metrics of who, who responded and how many, so that can filter how you take it. But I, for one, am looking forward to some of the very, we tried to make it plain language and accessible, which is why some people might find it overly simplistic, but we were trying to reach a broad audience to say, you know, what's your, your, where's your head? Do you want taxes to go up, down, stay the same? If you want it to change, what kind of services do you think should change? Is the, you know, what are the things that are the most important to you, that you really want us to make sure that we're spending the most of the money on and that we protect? And just to, to get a pulse check. It's a bit of a, a first attempt to try and have this conversation in a way that's plain language, and if people have ideas on how we could improve that consultation, we're definitely open and willing to hear that for next year, but, but that was the intent of the consultation, and, and I'm hopeful that it'll at least give a, a bit of, a, a piece of guidance for, for this table as we start to have that pre-budget conversation later this summer.
And I'll agree that it is, that it is a good start, and I am appreciative of it. It's just how we interpret whatever data comes out of it, and if I can just, because we will be, be forced here to prioritize, so that was the only, that was the only thing that people are having a hard time, right, because they think all those things are, you know, when I look, right, they, a lot of those things have high importance to them. But if we kind of simplified it like we have to, oh, I shouldn't say like we have to do, it's like, okay, you've got this much money, what are your, you know, to, to list the priorities so that we're not, you know, so we accomplish something and don't, you know, do a little bit with everything?
Counselor Pennell.
Yeah, thanks for the excellent report. I've got a couple of questions. There are some areas that I believe. There are some areas that I believe council needs to look at as we move forward. And that is, are there conditions that we've started doing like assessing roads that in my opinion, and I speak for only myself, is not working right? But it was council who approved these changes back away. Can we, as we look ahead at the best bang for the dollar, at least have discussion to reevaluate whether we are moving in the right direction or not? Now, the other question I've got, and it's, it's maybe just happens though, but when you look at whether it be roads, fire department, whatever, it looks like we're geared, we're not spending too much money in election year. And, and certain people are going to look at that and say, you know, how come all these expenses and all of a sudden you get election year and everything drops off? If that is the case, and I'm not suggesting this, but I would question. If it was the case, is it possible as we move into budget time that we sort of evaluate, you know, two years down the road, we're not spending as much money on this? Is this the time to look at spending in an off year and not worried about election?
It's a fair question.
Through the chair, to the counselor, the condition of the asset is what determines which year is to be replaced and what work is to be done on a particular asset. So in the areas where we have a formal condition assessment, that's just how it shakes out over the next 10 years, for example. So I, actually I didn't even look at it from the election perspective. I didn't even, I didn't even pick up on that. So it's based solely on condition. And in certain cases, for example, with the building condition assessment, we're taking it a step further and we're going through a multi-varied prioritization exercise where we're actually breaking that down further over the 10 years. And it, and there is a little bit of a gap in the current non-core asset management plan is that there are some asset classes that we are not assessing condition. And for the counselors who have read the asset management plan, what we need to do is set criteria up for those particular assets in order to determine which years they're, they're completed. And that, there are a couple of gaps that we will basically complete over the next year and finalize, but.
Quick follow-up?
Sure.
I appreciate the answer, but I kind of like an answer to the other part. Is it possible as we're moving ahead, if we're going to have a windfall in one year where we haven't got to replace a bunch of, is it possible to relook at how we evaluate? Maybe the one year you spend a little more, but you know, come the first to next year heading into another year? Because I've had taxpayers already call that have read that, that are questioning, why is it going down in election year? It's a fair question.
I think I'm going to jump in there because as I'm looking at the charts, that's actually not true, Counselor Pennell. Life cycle expenditure cost for fleet increase in year 2026, increase, sorry, slight decrease in 2030. Capital facilities, an increase, forty, going from 45 million in '25 to 43 million in '26. And then the only year that there's a decrease in fleet, in facilities is 2030. So I don't know, I, I, I have to say, I think maybe you might be reading the numbers incorrectly. Just, just based on what I'm seeing right now.
Thank you for your opinion. I was looking at, I was, I was looking at what the projection was back several years ago and even back then, it just, yeah. I accept the explanation. I've asked the question and it sounds like we're willing to look at that.
Through, through the chair, to Counselor Pennell, absolutely. And, and just to follow up on your one question, this will be a living document. So we're going to meet legislation. We're going to build as strong of an asset management plan as we can for 2025. And then if circumstances change on a material level, absolutely, we would change the asset management plan. So this will be a, a living document that may change based on circumstances. Perhaps we get an unconditional grant for $10 million from the federal government moving forward for asset management. Well, that will ultimately change the asset management plan. So absolutely, it's a living document. It's not set in stone and it will be reevaluated every year. And, and the intent is also to report to council on a yearly basis, at least what I've seen in most asset management plans, on service levels and whether or not we're meeting them. So that report to council on a yearly basis would identify whether or not there were any material changes needed.
I believe I have Counselor McNaughton next.
Thank you. I, I just want to sort of continue along that conversation a little bit and just caution anytime that we bring the electoral cycle into discussions about our assets, we, we, we run into a little bit of shaky ground where we, where we run the risk of politicizing what should be a, an equitable, needs-based management plan. And asset management plans themselves take a lot of the politicization out of it and give us an opportunity to, to assess based on needs. And I really love that opportunity and I would never want to lose it with any, bringing any discussions about the electoral cycle into it. I, I'm just going back a few years, John, Counselor Hirsch and I were at a workshop surrounded by asset managers and C A Os and the number one risk that they identified with asset management and, and planning for, with that very long view was to let politics get in the way. So just the, the wonderful strength of the, you know, the requirements that we have to undertake this as a municipality is that it, it is, it is fair, it is unbiased, and it is not going to respond to squeaky wheels. It's going to respond to a tree falling on a roof. So when it moves, it's going to be those surprises or those changing requirements or, you know, the tree falling on the roof scenario, which hopefully we don't have a lot of trees falling on a lot of roofs. And, and it's worked out well i- in a number of our areas. It's worked out well with an earlier fleet plan, which was one of our earliest asset management plans. It wasn't perfect. It was a great learning experience and it, and it takes us forward to, to this, fulfilling our requirements for Ontario. I'm, I think what we're looking at is very rich ground for very fair process. So just to, just to further along to, to what we were, what you were bringing forward, that would be my, my one thought. Thanks.
Counselor Harrison?
Yes, two things. One, I just want to extend, oh, I feel sorry for the staff, getting yelled at by the public. It sounds like the average day in a counselor's life, but anyway, I guess we all will survive. One thing I did in the upcoming short-term budget I would like to see particularly in fleet is when we're replacing a vehicle, I'd like with that request, the, the condition, mileage, age, some of that stuff of the vehicle we're replacing. And that would certainly be a help in us making decisions on whether to prolong that ask or is it immediately necessary? That would be a help for me anyway. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff on this matter? No? I'd just like to say thank you, thank you to everyone that was involved in, in pulling this together and will continue to be involved because this is not, it's not a one and done by any stretch. I, it's something that we were, were forced into by the province. Personally, I think it's something that's long overdue, having first been suggested in 2009 and then finally direction in 2017, I believe, is what, what the report stated. It's a long time to get here because it's a very complicated and, and time-consuming process and I, and I can appreciate that. And I just want to thank you very much. And yeah, and I'm going to add my voice to the choir about the, the, the interactions with members of the public who are, who are less than respectful. I think everybody knows my opinion on that and I hope that, that it doesn't continue in the future because it isn't, it isn't appropriate. Staff are out there doing as much as they can to inform the public and get the public's opinion in, in a very general way and I very much appreciate that. So, and I, and throughout this whole process, I'm certainly going to keep the one line in mind, Director Nickel, that you included here. This will allow the county to make informed decisions to ensure sustainable service delivery and long-term infrastructure management. It just sums up the whole process, but there's a lot of work before we get to the end. So anyways, thank you very much. I do, I do have mover and seconder, I believe it was Counselor McNaughton and Harrison. So unless there are any further questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor? That's carried. Not an ahtle though. So I'm now down to nine. I'm down to nine. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, we're still good. Well, no, I'm including her. I knew about her.
At least they know enough to.
Yeah, they've been telling me. So I, I have nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, he's just gone to the bathroom, hasn't he? Yeah, he's just out there. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, I still have a quorum. Yeah, okay.
I have to leave between you.
No, you're, you're fine. We, we still have quorum.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
We're good.
We have eight members of council if the two of you have to leave. So we're good.
I have no social life.
No one else is allowed to leave. I will tackle you at the door.
You're buying drinks.
Okay, so where are we here? So we have one, one more item left on the agenda, item 6.3. And we have Director of Housing, Adam Gohean, here to discuss the joint report of Finance and IT Department and the Housing Department dated July 25th regarding development charges, bylaws, amendments. Did you, if you could just give us a quick synopsis, I, I think we all understand this is more or less an update as required because of the changes to the provincial planning statement and the, the planning act for the most part. So Director Gohean, could you?
So through the chair, to council, this report is really two parts and the Director of Finance is not here, so I'll chip in on that part. That, the, the part related to the development charges and all the bylaws that make this a complicated motion is very administrative and it is just taking out the phase in that we had on, we were mandated to do under the legislation, but then the government changed the legislation and now we don't need it. So it is more, the report explains this is financially advantageous to the municipality if we go back to the way it used to be. So that's what those changes are for and it's very administrative. The more, there is another change that we have to make related to development charges, which is a mandatory exemption for affordable housing. And we are, there's a motion, that has to be done through a background study of a development charge. So if and when we get to the next development, background, background study for a development charge, we would make that change at that time. And the language of the motion is that we would like it to align with the approach taken with the capital facility bylaw, which is our tax exemption, which is, it's a bit complicated of a thought, but it's different than the provincial way of calculating. And I'll maybe turn it over to Adam to explain that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, so I can certainly speak to the two items, two recommendations in the report that relate to affordable housing. And just to carry on from C A O Wallace's comments, the, the new mandatory exemption was introduced through the More Homes Built Faster Act, what we, we used to call Bill 23, but it just came into effect in June. And it is a mandatory exemption, but the, the requirement is that, that in order to qualify or to be able to take advantage of that exemption, the, the provincial definition of affordable and, and all of the numbers and data that it's based on must be used. And, and we, we know, because we've seen this with the CMHC data, it's, it's unrealistically low, the, the income threshold and the rent threshold, given our own, our own data, which the Housing Department tracks and reports regularly. So it's, it's unlikely with the, with the legislations it's written that we would get many developers being able to take advantage of that. And so I need to make it clear, you know, to, to the public and the council that when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about lower than market rent and ownership, but, but we're not talking about social housing, we're not talking about rent geared to income and we're not talking about any other sort of subsidized housing. So when a developer looks to build a, a purpose-built rental, let's say an apartment building, that is based on the revenue and the expense, let's say the rental against the mortgage and the other expenses, that's not, not predicated on any sort of ongoing subsidization. So to, to base an exemption on, on affordable units using the provincial's numbers, make it in many cases just not feasible, not viable for a developer to be able to actually construct and, and carry the expenses of that development. So for those reasons, it's not likely that, that anyone would take advantage of it. So what we're proposing is that later on this year when the, our own bylaw is reopened, that we align the definition of affordable housing for the purposes of this exemption to, to align with our own municipal housing facilities bylaw. And that will, and which is based on our, our local market data and that will create a more incentivized environment for, for the development of affordable housing. So that's, that's the, the D C change that's recommended. We're, we're not asking for direction today as C A O Wallace indicated. We're looking for a direction to come back and have this discussion later on in the year in, in the broader context of, of development charges in the county. The other recommendation is, is somewhat housekeeping and it's on the basis of our own municipal housing facilities bylaw that provides the incentive of waiver of property tax, subject to a long-term agreement with, and, and evaluate on a case-by-case basis with council. And the purpose here is that we extend a tax waiver in exchange for at least 20 years of guaranteed affordable, affordability of, of a unit. And so what I found in, in promoting this bylaw out into the, the development community and, and further is that there are a number of questions about our definitions. And so what we're recommending here is clarification of the source of the data that's used in the interpretation of the bylaw. So our local data, which we keep track of, as I said, it was not necessarily in the bylaw before and we want to codify that in there. So a lot of that that we are recommending is on the basis of clarifying it and making it clearer to understand for those people that we are trying to get to construct or otherwise provide affordable housing in, in the county. And the other key recommended amendment, and it's worth noting, is the addition of a provision to allow affordable housing that already may exist to also take advantage of this as well. There are a number of opportunities potentially in, in the county for, for nonprofit or otherwise that are already providing affordable housing and, and we want to make sure that we're enhancing the security of those units into the future.
Questions, Counselor Pennell, Counselor Harrison?
It's not really a question.
Oh, actually, yes. Oh, actually, yes, yes, you're right.
A comment about number 10.
I keep forgetting to do this. We need to get the motion on the floor.
Oh, I thought we already had.
No, okay. So I need a mover and seconder, Councilor Engelsdorfer. And I'm not going to ask you to read point by point by point the entire, I think it's quite obvious. You did a lot of reading on Tuesday night.
He's so good at it.
And if you wish to just list it, yeah. Unless you feel like reading the entirety. Try to make it simple for you. Or do we have to read the entirety?
Yeah, through the chair, I think it would be preferred if we do read them.
Okay, all right. I was trying to make it easier for you. Seconder would be Councilor Hirsch.
It's an Engelsdorfer-Hirsch motion, the council received report FIN 10 2024 for information that a bylaw to amend by law 35 2023, the imposition of development charges for services related to a highway be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend by law 36 2023, the imposition of development charges for fire protection services be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend by law 37 2023, the imposition of development charges for ambulance services be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend by law 38 2023, the imposition of development charges for parks and recreation services be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend by law 39 2023, the imposition of development charges for library services be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend by law 40 2023, the imposition of development charges for long-term care services be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend by law 41 2023, the imposition of development charges for waste diversion services be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that a bylaw to amend municipal housing project facilities bylaw 161 2022, as amended, be approved at the August 27, 2024 council meeting, and that staff be directed to align the definitions of affordable housing with the municipal housing project facilities bylaw for the purposes of qualification for development charges exemption for the provision of affordable housing as part of the development charges background study update.
Councilor Pennell?
My only comment is, if staff can settle number 10, not only do you deserve a hero cookie, I'd like to be able to buy the, borrow the crystal ball at our time of budget deliberations because that's difficult.
Councilor Harrison?
Yes, Adam. Did I hear this right, that basically they're considering waiving development charges as well as perhaps taxes for 20 years? Or did I not understand that properly?
Through the chair to Councilor Harrison, that's correct. The new exemption provincially is mandatory. It's legislated by the province. And so if a developer was able to take advantage of that using the provincial rent numbers, then that would be mandatory. The municipal housing facility bylaw is an existing bylaw that we have and it provides for a property tax waiver, subject to long-term agreements for those affordable units, subject to an agreement by, with council. So you're correct.
So my question is this, if, is this available to perhaps a low-income individual that might have a piece of land that he could build an affordable house on and he met the criteria, would he be able to do that or is that just a developer could do that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, this is mostly for, to incite purpose-built affordable housing units. So it's typically used for multi-tenancy type situations.
Typically, but, so you're really not sure if, if one qualified in that regard because there's been a lot of houses that have built and that person puts sweat equity into it and they're in need of an affordable home and it would be attainable to them if the development charges were waived and the taxes were waived. I can't see why that shouldn't be given consideration as well as a developer putting out 20 homes or whatever, the exemption for 20 years on homes and developments. That's, I know you don't have the answer probably, but would you please kind of look into that? Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Adam? Councilor Maynard?
And sorry, because I'm gonna, you're not looking at the same pages that we are. So in ours, it's page 215 of 250, but I don't know whether this, it's kind of follows after some of the stuff in the Watson Report regarding the municipal housing projects facilities. And it's just the deletion of, of the regional or market area, like now we're, I am on in our agenda, page 215 to 16. Yeah, so right at the bottom there, where we're now, most of us say the same, but not more than 80% of the average price, blah, 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 based on market data. And now we're getting rid of the regional market area and putting in, you know, like putting in local. So are we really that out of whack with our regional market, that that, that that was necessary? Do you know why they made that, why that suggestion?
Through you, Mr. Chair to Councilor Maynard, the, in the previous bylaw, the term regional market area was italicized, which would indicate that there would be a definition for it, but there never really was. So we've just changed that by adding a new definition calling local market data and essentially it's confirming that we are to use our own data. It was an ambiguity previously and the intent was always that we would use our own data. It just wasn't clear in the bylaw as it was approved. So it's, we don't see it as a material change. We see it as a clarification that we are to use our own local, locally sourced and reliable ongoing data.
Okay, so then if there was no definition for market, what's the definition for local? Because for some of us, it's like, you know, you want to, we want to be comparable to what they're doing and what I would call our, our local regional, regional market, right? Like why are we not using, will that be numbers just from within Prince Edward County? Because we know that, that they're inflated, probably. And, but we're trying, if we really want to offer an incentive, then why not use our, our local area then, we'll call it.
Through you, Mr. Chair to Councilor Maynard, it actually, to use our own, our own local data, which is, you mentioned, the rental rates are higher potentially than some of our neighbors, actually helps this process, right? If to qualify for, under the definition for the tax waiver, it means that a developer could charge a little higher than some of our neighbors, then it makes that pro forma work better, makes it more feasible from the, from the development. There's a balance here, right? There's a balance to the number that someone would pay for rent, you know, the lower, the better, you know, for the renter. But what we're trying to do here is incentivize the construction of affordable housing. And to do that, we need to provide these incentives. So if a developer can base a pro forma on a slightly higher rental rate and that it's based on our own local market, we feel that's, that's the best way to get people to take advantage of the bylaw and the waiver.
Okay. And that's done, that number then would be set annually or how often would that be revised? I think, does it say?
It says right there.
Annually?
Yeah.
Through the chair to Councilor Maynard, that's quarterly data that the Housing Department collects on an ongoing basis and we report on our website.
Okay. All right. It's just different in different areas in the county, too. Okay, thank you.
And as well, did you want to, no, okay, I saw your fingers moving. So I guess I'll say, just to add to it, I think this is a really good step forward for clarifying exactly what it is, what, how this applies. And using StatsCan's most recent data, you know, mentions 60th percentile, which by the way, if anybody's interested, is 68,500 as a household income, which when you equate it to two people working in a household, that's minimum wage. So it's a realistic, low-wind number when it comes, in my mind anyways. And then when it comes to the, where am I going here, with regards to getting, getting that threshold where it's actually viable for somebody to build something. Because right now, the challenge has been and will continue to be until this, something like this moves forward, is that the numbers previously were unrealistic. There is no, no developer, no builder, no individual that could hit that threshold and make the numbers work to be able to build anything to relieve the, the housing shortage here and make affordable housing. So at this point now, it makes sense and we're using verifiable numbers, which I think is really, really important. So just, if that helps a little bit. It certainly helped me to have that better understanding of how important this can be. So anyways, does anybody else have anything they wish to say? Councilor Pennell?
Yeah, just one question, and that is, if this is geared towards developer, to get the, to produce the house and be able to sign the papers to do it for a 20-year period, what's to stop or why should we not be encouraging private individuals? Because now that you can put a second house on most properties, I believe there's lots of people out there that's got the money to do it, but they're not going to do it if they can't get the same as the others. So is it possible, as we look at that, to have them both involved?
I think Madam CAO would give a more clear answer, but we already do that through the secondary suites program, do we know?
Yeah, and through the chair to Councilor Pennell, the question was also asked by Councilor Harrison, so we don't want to misspeak on the bylaw. So we'll just make sure that when, we'll go research that and get a firm answer and if that changes anything before we bring forward to council. And if there's any options for you, we'll certainly have that conversation, but we'll just find a better way to explain why it doesn't apply. So we'll, we'll send something to all of council and then we can clarify this at the next council meeting when this matter comes forward.
Okay, good. Okay, I guess we have a motion on the floor. You have one for, or you're trying to vote? Okay, so who was your seconder? Councilor, so Councilor Engelsdorfer, Councilor Hirsch, all in favor? And that is carried. Okay, thank you very much, folks, and.
We can't go home, we don't have.
I know our usual adjourn mover. I'm going to, Councilor Maynard and Councilor Grosso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a Maynard-Grosso motion that this meeting now adjourns at 4:22 PM.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? No, okay. I hope everybody enjoys a nice weekend.